Zoning, uh, public hearing to session. I'd like to call this public session to order at 7:04 PM. Just for the record, this is, um, this is a special public hearing. Uh, we're only gonna hear testimony tonight on the, um, application for, uh, 795 James Farm Road. Uh, just a reminder of the rules of order for, uh, the zoning commission. If you've never appeared before at a Stratford zoning commission meeting before, uh, it is the, um, the right of the commission of effectively how it's gonna work, that the petitioner is gonna come up, explain the project a little bit, provide evidence, uh, for their project. Uh, then there's gonna be opposition to the project. Uh, I know from a concerned group of citizens and also from the town of Stratford is gonna provide, uh, some testimony. And then there's gonna be, later on, there's gonna be public testimony, but just to let everyone know, this is probably not gonna be the last, uh, public hearing on the subject. Um, it's really gonna be contingent upon, uh, testimony given tonight and, um, how the commission feels. Uh, but keep your eyes posted to Connecticut Post with legal notices. Uh, for the record, Commissioner Gavin Forrester sitting in for Commissioner Stephanie Phillips tonight as a regular voting member, uh, for the project on 795 James Farm Road. And just for a refresher reminder for the record, petitions to be heard tonight, um, were advertised in the Connecticut Post on June 6th and June 13th, and the abutting properties will also duly be posted on June, uh, 13th. Commissioner Forrester, do you wanna take the, uh, the three, uh, agenda items and take them off the table and read them into record?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. For this evening, we have three petitions. The first petition, 795 James Farm Road, petition of 500 North Avenue LLC to amend the zoning regulation by creating a new section 28 entitled Juliet Ridge Housing Opportunity Development Zone in an RS1 district. Petition number two, 795 James Farm Road, petition of 500 North Avenue LLC to change the zone of a portion of a property as shown on the site plan dated June 10th, 2015, completed by Rose, Tisco, and Company, from an RS1 district to the proposed Juliet Ridge Housing Opportunity Development Zone. Petition number three, 795 James Farm Road, petition of 500 North Avenue LLC for the approval of a site plan under the proposed section 28 of the zoning regulations in order to construct a 72-unit affordable housing development pursuant to section 8-30G of the state statutes on a property located in an RS1 district.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, is Attorney Bellis or representative of, uh, James Farm Road, wanna take the stand at this time?
Uh, yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Uh, I am Attorney Stephen Bellis, and as you may recall, I represent the applicant on all three of these petitions. Uh, when we left off last time, uh, we had, uh, told you that we were going to have our traffic, uh, study expert come forward. Uh, I'd like to introduce the, um, managing member of KWH Enterprise LLC. Uh, everyone should have a copy of the traffic study. They, it was submitted, uh, some time ago, uh, and I'll let him speak, and if you have any questions after he makes his presentation, don't hesitate to ask him.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Uh, my name is Kermit Hua. Uh, my practice is called KWH Enterprise LLC in Maryland, Connecticut. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, and I have, uh, 19 years of experience, uh, in traffic engineering. You may have, uh, read part of the, read the traffic study. Uh, I'll just briefly, you know, go over the main points of the study, main conclusions, and I'll be glad to answer any questions the commission, uh, may have. For these 72 apartment units, uh, it is estimated that it will generate 22 trips during the weekday morning peak hour and 28 trips during the weekday afternoon peak hour. So, you know, if you compare that to the existing traffic volume on James Farm Road, uh, in my professional opinion, the net increase in traffic, in trips from this development and the net traffic impact of this development is not significant. Uh, my traffic study also looked at the existing and future traffic conditions, uh, along James Farm Road at several intersections, uh, and, uh, the driveway we are proposing as well on James Farm Road. The conclusions from those studies were that, you know, overall, traffic is operating at favorable level of service, generally level of service C or better, like A, B, and C. And, uh, you know, uh, I think we only have one, uh, movement, uh, in the build condition that is future condition with a level of service D. Generally, you know, in area like this, uh, level of service D or better are considered acceptable, C or better are considered, uh, favorable. So, uh, there's really no capacity constraints as far as I can tell from the, based on these , uh, capacity analysis. I also looked at the past year accident records, uh, at these several intersections on James Farm Road, and there were no abnormal accident patterns that, uh, could be identified based on those records. Lastly, uh, I also looked at the side distances from the future driveway location. In other words, whether the dri, uh, drivers exiting the future side, uh, side driveway will have enough side distance for them to safely exit the driveway. Uh, there's no problem with that at all, you know, based on, uh, my field measurement and based on, uh, Connecticut, Connecticut DOT criteria, uh, for this roadway. So, that's a brief summary. Uh, I would be glad to answer any questions.
Yes, I'll open this up to the commission at this time. Uh, any commissioners, any questions for the, uh, traffic expert?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Question for you, if I recall what you just stated correctly, you said 22 peak AM trips?
That is correct, 22 AM, 22 PM, 28 PM.
So what do you consider peak time in the morning? You talk to 7 to 9?
What we did is, we counted like two hours, 7 to 9, and 4 to 6, and from that, we picked the hour with the highest volume, uh, which was 7:45 to 8:45. In the afternoon is 4:45 to 5:45. So it's that peak hour.
So in that one particular hour, you're anticipating 22 AM trips for a 75 unit?
Yes, and the reason of that is obvious, you know, assuming people are all working or have some other business during the day, they don't actually, you know, go out at the same time. Some people leave a little early, some people a little bit late, you know? That's the reason.
Thank you. No further questions.
Yeah, Commissioner.
You mentioned that, uh, at one moment, the traffic goes to a level D. Can you explain that a little bit more? Tell me when, um, how often, what time of day?
Right, okay, let me... The only level of service D approach is the eastbound Armstrong Road at the James Farm Road intersection.
What was that road again, eastbound?
Armstrong Road. Actually, that's in Shelton, I think, right? It's over the town line, yeah.
I believe it's right on the border of the two towns.
Yeah, yeah. So, the, the average delay during the weekday afternoon peak hour, you know, I'm, I'm just looking at the build condition, in other words, with all these side trips are, when all these side trips are considered, is 27.9 seconds if you look at page 16 of the report in, uh, table number seven. So, about 28 seconds average delay for these people, you know, stop at that, uh, intersection of Armstrong Road and, uh, James Farm Road. That's the worst approach we have. You know, as far, as I'm concerned, you know, 28 seconds during a commute hour, busy commute hour, you know, obviously, there's room for improvement, but I don't, I think that's acceptable.
What is, you said it was the afternoon peak hours, what is the time span of the afternoon peak hours?
Uh, 4:45 to 5:45. But that's based on the existing traffic counts.
One hour? You said 4:45 to 5:45?
Yes, one hour period.
One hour, okay.
Yeah, hello. Is, uh, Oranoke, was that taken into this, uh, Oranoke Lane, was that taken into the, uh, traffic study, or just James Farm all the way down through Shelton around Cranberry Pond?
You mean, the, the, the scope of the study?
Yes.
Uh, the scope of the study, obviously, we, we looked at the driveway, the future driveway. We also looked at the, the three additional intersections, three, we think, you know, they are not really very busy, just because James Farm Road is not a busy road at all, you know? In the south, we look at James Farm Road with Chapel Street, uh, little bit to the north, if I, I may, I may not be able to pronounce this correctly, Oranoke?
Well, that's what I was asking about, yes.
Yeah, that was looking, that, that T driveway, sort of a, a little bit north of our side driveway, yes. And further north, we looked at the Armstrong Road intersection, which is in Shelton, on the town line at least.
Okay.
I have one question. And that study was done when?
Uh, that, this study was, was done recently, April of this year.
No other questions?
Uh, yeah, just, uh, just for clarification purposes, so the hour 4:45 to 5:45 is what you've, uh, what you've measured to be the most dense or high intensity traffic time for the AM, and then, um, 7:45 to 8:45 was your, was your morning maximum density or traffic, um, hours?
Right, right. So, we, we looked at it, you know, two hour counts, essentially, have looked at counts every 15 minutes. We have eight 15-minute period, like, right, for two hours. So we picked four busiest, uh, period of those eight. So that's, we get, you know, 7:45 to 8:45, 4:45 to 5:55.
And, uh, do you have any sense of proportion, how many cars are going down Oranoke Lane, going down towards Chapel, or going north towards Armstrong? Do you have any sense of proportion, or?
You mean from this development?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, I do. Uh, if you look at the page 12 and 13, is, I have sort of assumed, uh, distribution of the limited number of side trips, you know, 22 and 28 during the two peak hours. Uh, I was assuming 12 exit trips going, uh, for the morning peak hour, uh, 12 going north, three going south at a side driveway. In other words, three vehicles going towards the Chapel Street intersection and 12 vehicles going towards the, uh, Oranoke Lane. And some of them make a right turn onto that lane, some of them keep going north, uh, to the Armstrong Road intersection.
Okay, and, uh, do you have any, any sense of the afternoon? I measure some proportional numbers, it'd be pretty similar, just, just for public record.
Right, uh, for the afternoon, again, I'm assuming most of the return trips, you know, will be from the north, uh, from Armstrong Road mainly, and some of them making a left turn from Oranoke Lane, they enter the side driveway. Uh, you know, I, I was assuming 13 trips, return trips will from the points north, three return trips will from points south from the Chapel Street intersection.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, just for clarification, you gave us the peak times. What, at what time in the morning did the traffic study start and at what time did it end?
You mean the count? The actual, we, we started at 7 o'clock, ended at 9 o'clock.
9 to night?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, have you been provided a copy of the Stratford Police Department's traffic count and speed survey which was conducted June 14th through 16th, and do you have any comment?
No, I, I, I haven't seen that, but, you know, what I did, my interaction with the police department, I did request the, uh, accident reports from the police department. That's my only interaction with them.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions from the commission at this time? Uh, if not, um, thank you for your testimony, Attorney Bellis. I don't know if you have any more, more comment to add?
Not on the traffic study. Uh, I had received a letter, it was in the file, um, dated April 26th, 2016, from the Yukon. Uh, it was addressed to Mr. Jay Hibansky, and it was, obviously, he forwarded it to me. Um, and it had, uh, concerns, probably from the residents, uh, about perhaps, uh, historical significance of the property. And, uh, in the Yukon letter, uh, it had suggested that an assessment survey be done of the particular property. And, uh, so, in response to that, I would like to, uh, hand the commission, uh, a report, and that report is from the Archaeological Consulting Services, uh, where they did an interim report on May 31st and a second one on June 13th, and then I'll just summarize it briefly. I remember the procedure. You stamp it in? Okay, I'll start on this side.
I get the second one? Oh, you only have one copy of it?
Oh, yeah, a couple by, but... Yeah.
I gave him the stamped one, that's why...
Jay, could you pass them to the commissioner?
Here's another.
Should be, uh, May 31st and June 13th.
Okay, that's, I need the June 13th. Great. Sure's coming around right now, there's two sets.
Is this something different?
Yep.
Yeah, there's a June and a May one. This is a June, but it's a June.
The extra for counsel. Okay, so what I've handed you, uh, was a response, two responses from that April 26th letter, uh, wherein they talked about, uh, requesting an archaeological survey to see if there was any historical significance on this parcel. The first letter was dated May 31st, and that's where the, um, uh, team did some background checking and then did field results on May 27th and May 28th. Um, and they, uh, looked at the structures that were on the site, um, and looked for any historical significance. Um, and then they made some recommendations, and one of the recommendations that they made was that there be what they call a Phase 1B, uh, Archaeological Reconnaissance Survey to determine the potential for significant historic site context. So the May 13th, May 31st letter is what I would consider like the 1A. So, they went back out, uh, after that, uh, once they said that they wanted us to do the 1B test, we hired them to go ahead and do the second part, and that's on the June 13th letter. And you can see from that particular letter that they actually did some, uh, test holes, and they give a little bit more detail as to what it is they found, um, as far as what was on the particular property, both historical and in, uh, based upon the field, uh, you know, survey walking on the field. Um, and then they did the subsurface shovel tests at every 50-foot intervals. Uh, I'm not gonna read the whole report, but I've introduced it into the record, but, um, what the, what they basically, uh, came up with was that there was no prehistoric artifacts recorded during the survey. Uh, there was some moderate late historic artifacts, uh, and they explain, you know, some of the, uh, structures that they found, as well as the stone walls and whatnot. Uh, and, um, I guess the summary of the, uh, all their findings would be that, uh, all the recovered artifacts are late historic in origin, um, and everything that they found was kinda related to an aggregarian household setting of the early to late 20th century without, that's O-U-T, without significant feature, context, or artifacts, and therefore, they recommended no further archaeological conservation efforts for the project property. That was the conclusion. And of course, it goes into a lot more detail of what they did, but the, uh, I did want you to know that we, um, uh, not only did the Phase 1A, but we also did the Phase 1B to, to make sure that there was no historical, uh, artifacts on the property. I've put together a list of all the exhibits, um, that, uh, that I've introduced and my portion of the presentation. Obviously, um, I can, it's up to the chair, I can give some closing remarks now, but generally, what I do is, uh, come back and rebuttal, and maybe I can wrap it up at that time. But I'd like to at least hand out my exhibit list to make sure that everyone has all the exhibits that I've listed, um, and I've just typed them up. I, there should be 18 of them, including, including these two reports. For the record, I, I had given, uh, Jay, an earlier list. I just updated it from the, uh, last hearing that we had and included the, uh, exhibit number 18.
Okay, so just for clarification purposes, is this now an updated index of?
Yes, it is, sir. Yeah. So at this time, um, I would, uh, reserve time for rebuttal after I hear comments from the, uh, other side and perhaps from some of the residents. And I also, as I promised, I have here with me tonight, uh, Pat Rose, who's the architect of record, uh, Michael Klein, who's the soil scientist and biologist, who, who was, um, I've given you his report. Uh, our, I saw Manny. Manny's the engineer, uh, who testified, and our, uh, traffic expert. Uh, so everyone is here. If the commission had any, uh, questions of these gentlemen, uh, they, I made them available, as I promised to you I would.
Oh, sure thing. Uh, before we, we introduce, uh, opposing sides, if there's any final questions from the commission, um, for the applicant at this point, uh, since he, he has all the experts here, I think this, this might be a good time to have, if you had any questions from, lingering from the previous, uh, hearing or came up tonight. Uh, if not, we, we, we still have the right to cross-examine at any time, too, so, um, you're not losing any point in the say. So, I don't know if Attorney Kubik or Attorney Kelly wants to, um, go first, unless if Attorney Bellis has any final statements.
No, I, I'm not gonna give my final statement, I'll wait till rebuttal.
Okay, oh, perfect. Attorney Kubik, the fourth, yours.
Uh, Joseph Kubik of Harlow Adams and Friedman for the record, and I'd like to ask some of the, uh, the expert witnesses presented some questions.
Uh, sure, by all means.
And what is the, how do we do that here? Do, we have two microphones?
Um, do we have a mobile microphone, or if, um, there's also in the, uh, the attorney that pit down there, too?
I'd like to call Mr. Watt, please.
Hello.
Hello.
Gentlemen, I just need a name, just for record.
Uh, Kermit Hua, uh, KWH Enterprise Traffic Engineer.
Mr. Watt, I'm an attorney for, uh, Concerned Citizens Group of Stratford, as well as Judith Kerme and Kathleen Martinez, who live across the street from the subject property. And first, are you a principal with KWH Enterprise?
Yes.
Is North Avenue LLC the client of KWH Enterprise LLC?
Yes.
Is KWH Enterprise LLC being paid for its services in this matter?
Yes.
Is 500 North Avenue LLC paying KWH Enterprise for its services in this matter?
That's the same question, right?
Nope, I asked if they, they were paying you.
They are what?
Is, is 500 North Avenue LLC paying KWH Enterprise LLC for its services in this matter?
Well, yes.
Thank you. Is the proposed driveway on the site a high-volume site driveway?
No.
And why is it not a high-volume, well, withdrawn? What constitutes a high-volume site driveway?
Well, I mean, you can compare, uh, just the, just, you can look at the number of trips, you know, how many trips generate. 22 trips for 72 apartments, you know, that's really not a significant, uh, for a peak hour. Secondly, secondly, let me finish. Secondly, if you can compare the 22 trips, uh, with the existing, uh, traffic counts we have, uh, if I may refer to my figure, uh, figure four, which is the existing peak hour, uh, I'm just doing some math here, probably like 200, 300 vehicles, you know, James Farm Road, you, I'm talking about James Farm Road traffic, both approaches. Uh, James Farm Road itself is not a busy road, and even that, you compare those 22 trips with James Farm Road, it's only a small percentage of the existing, uh, peak hour traffic on James Farm Road. That's the reason I'm saying this is not significant.
So your, your testimony is that the proposed driveway for the site is not a high-volume site driveway, correct?
Proposed driveway...
Is yes or no?
Uh, I'm gonna, uh, this is not a courtroom, um, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I have no problem with reasonable cross-examination from another attorney, that may be permitted, but this is not a courtroom. He's not gonna be interrogated, and he's not gonna be grilled. He can be asked a question or two, and there's boundaries and limits. This is a zoning hearing, and if Attorney Kubik, uh, would get reprimanded by a judge for doing this in a courtroom, he's not gonna get away with it here.
Attorney, Attorney Bellis, Attorney Bellis, that's not true, and you know it.
So let's, uh, let's proceed. If he has a few more questions, he can ask.
Uh, just all speakers, uh, speak as clearly as possible into the microphone if you can. Uh, we'll, we'll proceed with, with the last question. Um, again, the applicant has a right to, to answer the question as they so choose.
Yeah, could you please repeat a question, please?
The question was, so your response to my question as to whether or not the high, that the proposed driveway is a high-volume site driveway is that it is not, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Is the proposed site driveway offset from Alexandria Drive?
Uh, I don't have the, uh, site plan right in front of me. If I remember correctly, there is a little bit offset, yes.
Will the offset of the proposed site driveway from Alexandria Drive create traffic conflicts?
No.
Okay. I'm gonna hand you a document that stated March 12th, 2006, I'm sorry, withdrawn. I'm gonna hand you a document that stated June 1st, 2015. Can you please identify this?
Uh, yes.
Please, please, please identify the document.
Uh, these are the, uh, a report I prepared for a client in Milford.
And I'm gonna hand you another document. It's a setup, it's a, it's a plan of a development. Can you please identify the plan of development?
Yeah, these the development plan for that Milford project on, uh, 335 Meadowside Road.
Take a look at it just a, are you sure?
Uh, yes, three, it says here, 335 Meadowside Road.
I'm gonna hand you another document dated March 12th, 2016. Can you please identify this document for the record?
Uh, yes, this is, uh, Seaside Avenue in Milford. I prepared for, uh, clients, uh, for a project in Milford.
And I'm gonna hand you a fourth document. It's another plan. Can you please identify the plan?
Uh, these the same project in, uh, for Seaside Avenue in Milford.
Thank you. I'd like to submit, as an exhibit, the June 1st, 2015 document that the witnesses identified, and present, as the next exhibit, the plan, the development plans for 335 Meadowside Road in Milford, Connecticut.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to object to the introduction of these documents on a relevancy basis. This is a hearing about property that's in Stratford, Connecticut, and it has nothing to do with property in Milford, Connecticut. So if Attorney Kubik has questions that he would like to ask the expert, that's fine, but introducing extraneous, irrelevant material from a different town that we don't have familiarity with is not going to help us here tonight.
I'll just ask the question to Attorney Kubik this way. What relevance does the Milford documents and site plans have to your on the questions and to this particular application?
It has directly to do with the experts' opinions given in other cases where there have been offset driveways.
So in short, you're speaking to the credibility of aforementioned witnesses?
Indeed.
You may proceed.
Thank you. So I'm submitting the plan to 335 Meadowside, Milford, Connecticut as an exhibit. And I'm submitting the letter identified by the witness dated March 12th, 2016, as it pertains to 214, 224 Seaside Avenue, Milford, Connecticut. And I'm submitting the plans identified by the witness for 214, 224 Seaside Avenue, Milford, Connecticut.
These are just additional copies of previously submitted documents. Thank you, Attorney.
Sure.
This one is.
Isn't it true that one of these developments only had nine units proposed and another development only had eighteen units proposed?
Let me refresh my memory.
Please.
Yeah, it's about in our range. I don't have the exact, you know, unit counts. I have eighteen units for the Meadowside Road. Yeah, Seaside is about nine units, you're correct.
Thank you. And isn't it true that in both reports for these two offset driveways, you referred to them as high-volume site driveways?
You need to look at things at a context. If you have this kind of volumes, you know, in Manhattan, in Hartford, in Milford, in Stratford, you need to look at a context. What I'm saying in the context in the Milford is, it's a road, those two are roadways with very dense, single-family driveways. So in that context, those two are. In this context in Stratford, if you have the experience going to James Farm Road, it's not a very dense, it doesn't have a lot of dense, single-family driveway, especially in that stretch of James Farm Road. So in that context, you know, I say this is not a significant roadway with high traffic volume compared to those.
Given the offset to Alexandria Drive, in your opinion, would it be a better location, would it be better if the driveway was located away from Alexandria Drive in a southerly direction?
No, I think it works. Why do you want to move it?
So in your opinion, that there's no problem with the offset?
No problem at all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Next is, um.
I'm sorry, I was asking about copies for all the commissioners.
Oh, yeah, just a, a point on zone, Commissioner Jay Hibensky and Commissioner Scott Fairton Bowden were just verifying the timestamps on documents for public record. Attorney Kubik, the floor, it's yours.
Thank you. I'd like to call Michael Klein. Michael Klein, I'm Joe Kubik, I'm a lawyer for the neighbors, you've heard me say that before, I believe. I thought you were retired.
Apparently, you were misinformed.
Apparently, I was wrong. Are you a principal, then, with, what's the name of your company?
You know the answer to that question. It's the way my documents are signed, it's in my qualification statement.
Can you please state the name of your company for the record?
Environmental Planning Services LLC.
Are you a principal of that company?
Mr. Chairman, is this, is this going anywhere? I'm not going to stand here and be interrogated either. If you have a technical question to answer me, ask me, that's fine. This is not a courtroom. You don't need to go through a formal series of qualifications. If you don't believe I'm qualified to make my judgment, you can put that testimony on the record.
I want to know, all I want, I'm asking the basic questions.
And you have the right to respond to them as you see fit.
I'm not going to answer.
Is 500 North Avenue a client of your company?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Was your company retained by 500 North Avenue to provide services in this matter?
I'm not sure.
Is your company being paid by 500 North Avenue?
Do we spawn it here as the right to answer as they see fit? Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, order please.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Is your company being paid by 500 North Avenue to provide services in this matter?
We're being paid to provide services in this matter, just as you are. I don't recall who's written the checks. I have hundreds of clients.
Is 500 North Avenue your client today in this matter?
I don't recall who's written the checks. To what I already answered.
Order, 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 please. Order, please.
So, let me just ask it more time. I'm not sure what your response to this one's going to be. Is 500 North Avenue the client of your company?
I know this project is 795 James Farm Road.
Who's the client?
795 James Farm Road, to the best of my knowledge.
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, we're trying to conduct a hearing.
I think this is pointless, so I'm not going to ask any more questions of this witness.
Okay.
Mr. Silva? Are you a principal of Rose Tezo?
Yes.
Is Rose Tezo's client in this matter 500 North Avenue LLC?
To my knowledge, I believe so.
Is Rose Tezo being paid for its services in this matter?
Yes.
Is 500 North Avenue LLC paying Rose Tezo for its services in this matter?
I really don't know the answer.
Who would know?
Probably my accounts person.
Your accounts person?
Yeah, my receivables.
So you don't know who's paying 500, you don't know who's?
No, and we are getting, we're getting paid by somebody. I mean, we are getting, we prepared the documents for 500 North Avenue LLC.
Yep, yep. Did you bring the plans with you by any chance?
Yeah.
There is a Eversource CNLP utility easement along the back of the property, correct?
Correct, it is on the west side of the property.
And do you know what the use is pursuant to the easement granting the right-of-way that the owner of the property may use of the property?
I do not know the specifics of the easement, but the easement is for air rights for the high-voltage power lines.
But you don't know what the owner can do beneath the wires, correct?
Typically, typically on other projects, I can't save to this exact easement language, but typically, they can construct underneath, cross underneath with a roadway, things of that nature, depending on how the easement's written. But we don't have any crossings underneath easement.
Want to set up the easel, would that be easier? The easel?
What's that?
You want to, oh, you can just hold it, that's fine. I was going to offer to, you set up the easel, but.
Oh, that's fine.
I think Pat's going to get it. Isn't it true that your plans call for building a retaining wall in part of the easement area?
It's adjacent, maybe a certain segment of it, maybe crossing.
So it's true that part of it goes into the easement area?
Looking at the plan right now, I don't believe that there's, actually, hold on, here's the easement line. Yes, there are some portions of the wall, small portions, that cross into the easement.
In an SP1, the drawing we're looking at currently, where you show the wall, that's the actual top of the wall, correct?
Correct, but it's also shown at a thickness that the batter on that type of wall isn't very much. It's about six inches for every twenty feet.
Isn't it a three-quarter of an inch for every?
No, that would be for a sidewinder versi-lock wall. This is a Bronco block. These are blocks that are two by, two feet high by four feet long.
So how much farther into the easement does the base of the project extend?
I couldn't tell you right off the bat because I'd have to scale it, but retaining walls and things of that nature, parking driveways are allowed inside of utility easements of this nature.
Isn't it true that to build a retaining wall within the utility right-of-way by North, 500 North Avenue requires permission from Eversource?
That's correct, and that's typically gone for after we get a zoning permit or a building permit from the town.
If Eversource does not grant permission to build the retaining wall in the easement area, what happens to this plan?
It would have to be modified and come back to the town.
And what is the process for obtaining permission from Eversource to build a structure like this in an easement?
We would submit the plans with the zoning permit, because they don't want to look at anything that doesn't have, that isn't a real project. And we would do some profiles to show them the height of the wall versus their, height of their lowest wire.
So it's your testimony that Eversource requires a zoning permit before they will review the plans?
Typically, a lot of the utilities, I don't know if Eversource them specifically, but the gas companies, the DOT, would typically want a zoning permit first, because they want, they don't want to review projects that are not real.
Okay.
They have.
So we don't know, you don't, as you're standing, you don't know if Eversource will approve this intrusion into the right-of-way?
There's not, I don't think there's anything that's, that sticks out at me that they would deny this project, no.
Okay. And if, after all this work that you've done and for all these people here, a couple nights in a row now, if Eversource denies the, denies the permission, all this is for nothing?
No, I mean, there's also, there's workable alternatives that can be done over the counter with the zoning office. Attorney Kubik, I have just a question as a zoning commissioner, cross-examining. So, for example, what would be the grounds for Eversource to deny that easement? So if there's a clearance issue, so they'd like to have certain clearance from the lowest wire, depending on the way that the wires sag, to say, a driveway or a parking space. Typically, there's a lot of crossings of these easements throughout the state. In fact, there's actually some houses built near them, which is something that happened a long time ago and doesn't happen anymore. But the easements, the easements are written that they're just air rights, basically, and that CNLP has the right to review those projects. And should it be rejected for some sort of a grounds that Eversource would deem necessary, would that fundamentally alter the site plan and, or could it potentially alter the site plan to the point it might have to trigger some sort of other planning and zoning review? Just maybe just the relocation of some parking spaces from being ninety-degree spaces to parallel spaces along the wall.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Attorney Kubik, for the floor.
Well, I'd like to draw the attention of the witness to the north?
Northwest.
Corner, which seems to be the most egregious intrusion into the, into the right-of-way. If you had to remove, move that wall back away from the right-of-way?
Correct.
And we know that it's flared out at the base some amount of distance, maybe a foot to three feet, depending upon who's doing the calculations. What happens to all those units on the?
The units wouldn't be affected, essentially, the inside radius here that we're turning in, and we'd have to bring back that, we'd have to pull that recreational area to the east and make a larger radius there. So in turn, the outside radius would be a lot larger, which pulls that radius in from, from the easement.
So it's your testimony that you wouldn't lose any units, correct?
No, I wouldn't lose any units. I would, the recreational area would have to be relocated to the east, and this curve here would start, and this point here would come around, so that this curve here would be farther away from the easement itself.
Now, you've, your plans call for sewer extension, correct?
Correct.
You, are you planning a public or a private sewer?
It would be private sewer to James Farm Road, and then the sewer extension in James Farm Road would have to be a public extension.
And what are the plans of 500 North Avenue LLC for traffic management during sewer installation?
That would be done in coordination with the police department and the DPA as to how we would coordinate that. Essentially, the DPA could even elect to run the sewer up this, not in the road itself, but also in the shoulder.
Now, your plans call for the installation of water storage chambers on the westerly side of the property, correct?
That's correct.
Let's go to that, yeah. Yep, I see them. Will the water storage chambers create a hydrostatic pressure on the property?
No. No, the reason is because they, we have a free draining system. It'll be in gravel, it's in a fill, fill material, so it's very, has a high porosity. And the backside of the retaining wall will have drainage also. So alleviate any hydrostatic pressure.
At no time will these, will these chambers fill up with water?
The chambers will fill up with water, but the hydrostatic pressure of the soil around it will be dissipated by the drainage on the backside of the wall.
Okay, and who, I see, I see you've got some lines here along the westerly border.
Right here?
Yeah, that line.
Okay.
The property, is that a property line?
It is a proposed property line.
It's not a real property line?
No, typically, when you go for a project like this, for instance, if you have a half-acre zone and you want to do quarter-acre lots, you go in for the zone change first, and then you go in for the subdivision.
Now, this plan is different from the plan that was originally presented, correct?
Um.
As to the westerly property line?
The line might have been revised slightly, yes.
Well, there's approximately a one-acre parcel that was added along the westerly side of the property?
I think the only, the only difference is that we added some more land that's underneath the right-of-way.
Why?
It was to give the, to give the property, the project, a little more room for constructability.
In your opinion, are the Zoller pumps called out in your plan adequate to meet the application?
The pumps haven't been necessarily designed yet, they're not for construction. They're just as placeholder, basically, we intend to put Zoller pumps with that kind of phasing, and usually, those things are designed at, when the DPA application is at.
So the pumping system hasn't been designed yet, correct?
Correct, mostly, for instance, the structure for the buildings hasn't designed yet, the mechanical electricals for their building haven't been designed yet. You just don't spend that kind of money until you have.
And the structural engineering and geotechnical engineering for the wall hasn't been designed yet?
The geotechnical has been preliminary, has a preliminary design, but not a final one, correct?
No, you've stated in your material that you'll provide guide rails along the wall. Where do you propose to provide guide rails along the wall?
So essentially, anywhere there's a, where there is a parking space, so we have guide rails in front of the parking space, so that instead of hitting a fence, because there's a fence required on top of the wall, four-foot fence, so no one can fall over it, we also have a guardrail in front of it, so that it has a little bit more.
Do those parking spaces you're talking about on the westerly side of the property slope down towards the power lines?
No, they slope away.
They're level, or?
They slope away. Actually, we have the grade, the proposed grades are sloped towards the catch basins, which are here, and there's another set, probably easier to see over here. which are here, and there's another set, probably easier to see over here. There's a catch basin here, here, and here, so basically, the end of the wall is sloped a little bit higher. We fill it a little bit higher so it slopes away from the wall and into the catch basin.
And have guide rails been considered at the north westerly corner of the property? Right where the wall, where the driveway comes down to the bottom?
I'm just looking for the specific. I think in the detail, I could be wrong. So currently, we have a four-foot fence throughout, but it would definitely be prudent to have guide rails throughout that driveway.
So will there be guardrails, I'm sorry, guide rails at the bottom of the hill of this driveway as it comes to the southwesterly corner of the property?
There certainly should be.
There what?
There will be.
And how far will those guide rails extend away from the wall?
They're actually, because of the Bronco block wall is a very large structural wall, they actually have voids in them that you could put the posts right into the top of the wall.
So it's your opinion that the guide rails at the bottom of, in the southwesterly corner of the property will not impede traffic flow?
No, they'll be right on top of the wall.
Have you provided an A2 survey?
I can't remember if it was submitted, but there was one done.
Well, I haven't seen it in the file.
Okay.
Will you submit an A2 survey?
Sure, certainly.
When?
I think one was done, one has been done, if it hasn't been submitted, I don't know why.
So when will it be submitted, if it hasn't been?
Soon as, soon as we get it.
This week?
Could be.
That's not, you're not going to give me a definitive date, are you?
No.
For the record, there's no A2 survey in the file. Is the dumpster proposed on your plans adequate for 72 units?
Well, it is because what you have, I could have Pat come up and talk to it, but usually, in this case, you have a kind of a small collection rooms inside each unit, and then that goes out to the dumpster, so you have a little more capacity than just the dumpster that's outside. And basically, sizing really depends on the frequency of pickup.
If you, how frequent would pickup be for one dumpster on this property?
I couldn't, I couldn't tell you, I'm not an expert in that, but it would probably be one to two times a week.
If you had to add a dumpster, where would you put it on this plan?
Essentially, I guess I'd, if I had to add it, somewhere here in this area where the generator is, or somewhere near those recreational areas, you could put an enclosure.
Thank you, I have no other questions.
No, thank you.
Attorney Kupick, is that it for the presentation, or do you still retain the floor?
That's it for the cross-examination.
Thank you. I guess Attorney Kelly or representative of the town, if they want to take the stand at this time, they're more than welcome to. Okay, thank you. Would the applicant wish to address anything right now, or would they like to wait to prepare a rebuttal?
Oh, I'll wait until I prepare a rebuttal, but I just wanted to know whether I should have my, if the commission wanted me to keep my experts here if you had any further questions.
Sure thing, I'll open this up to if the commission had any questions that came up during Attorney Kupick's questions and responses.
I have one question, that water storage tanks are for the runoff, water runoff?
I'm going to let the engineer address that for you.
Manny Silva from Rose Tizo. So essentially, there's two storage tanks, I mean, some people consider the galleries, call them storage tanks, yeah. So if you want to call these things that Attorney referred to, then yes, that is for stormwater storage. So when it rains, the water falls on the pavement and roof, and it goes into those galleries, it holds it for a little while. There is another storage tank on site, which is the, which is for the sewer itself, but that's a whole different story.
And, because they don't have public water there, do they have public water?
No, 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 the storage is for rainwater.
No, no, I understand that, but I'm just saying, there's public water that goes to this.
Correct, yes, it's city water, yeah.
City water, yeah, thank you.
Mr.?
Yeah, excuse me, I have a question for you too. On the water storage for the runoff for the property, what are, on that picture there, what is that? Two, three manholes on the top?
Basically, yes, I have.
And then, and then there's a ladder, a straight ladder going down into there? So they can clean that out eventually at one time?
I have inspection ports on every run of galleries on both ends.
All right, so between that storage and your sewer ejector pit that you're not sure that you're going to design yet, those are both confined spaces?
Well, no, I'm not, I'm sure I'm going to design it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but yes, they are, they are.
They are confined spaces, so you're going to need a competent person to go down into these.
Correct.
Because they attribute to about 372 construction workers' deaths a year because nobody does the monitoring. Joe the plumber will get called to go there and open it up and go down there, and the next thing you know, he's gone in 30 seconds. Your other storage area, that'll take fertilizer, nitrogen is in fertilizer, that gets stored up in there, somebody wants to get down in there to clean it, and that takes the air out, and then you have another person out. So I mean, we need to make some kind of note deciding what you're going to do here for a competent person for maintenance.
Correct, usually, the, what this project would have would be a property manager that would have to hire the appropriate company, which would have a Ramback truck. Normally, they don't, personnel does not go down into the galleries, they just send, they just have, they open up the portholes, and they send the hose down there on one end to vacuum, and the other side is to jet water.
And the same thing, they'll be going down into the confined space for the sewer ejector pit.
Well, they shouldn't be going into it.
Well, they'll have to do some repair work in there.
Correct, but as you can see here. So what we normally do is, so what we're proposing here is a duplex pump system that's on a rail, right? So what it is, is that they're on a track, a vertical track.
So they'll pull them out through the top?
Pull them up from a chain, yeah.
But you'll still have the piping down there and the strainers, and what are you going to do with the wipe problem? Because it's become quite the problem, and the surrounding towns, our town, with wipes getting flushed down in through there.
Right, so again, that's when they send down the vac truck hose, and they suck it up. It's essentially what the town does, and what, and even now, private contractors, they have been purchasing these vac trucks to do that, because it is a liability to send people down there. So what they do is they send, they have a, basically, a vac.
Yeah, if I recall right, on the drawing there, you do show a ladder going down into there, so that just, right off the bat, doesn't that automa, that automatically takes it?
There's no ladder in the septic, in the sewer pump system, there's no ladder.
It's a side rail ladder to go down there eventually.
I have, I have a ladder detail on the storm manholes.
Yeah.
Right here.
Yeah.
But on the septic pump, the only thing that we have is a rail system that has to be picked up from a hatch with a chain.
All right, well, actually, those then are just definitely two confined space areas then.
Correct, I mean, and that's a logistics thing.
And they definitely need to be with a competent person, because they just changed the rules as of 2015.
Correct, there would have to be a licensed person that knows what they're doing.
A competent person that changed it, they finally got it right, and they just hope that we make some response time here, so we have people doing that.
I agree, there's a maintenance plan right on SP2 that we maintain and check these every six months.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner, any other questions?
I see Attorney Kelly has risen and is approaching the podium.
Attorney Kelly, do you have a cross-examination or clarifying question?
Mr. Chairman, Kevin Kelly from Kevin Kelly and Associates, for the record. I don't have any questions, but I did have one comment, and that was with regards to the report of Mr. Michael S. Klein of Environmental Planning Services LLC. I would object to that being included in the record, because based on his own admission, he couldn't identify whom he worked for or why he was really presenting that, so I don't believe it's relevant to the application on one ground, and on another, because we don't know whom he is working for, why the report is here, it's really difficult for other parties involved in this to ascribe the correct burden of proof to the documents, so it's prejudicial to other parties.
Just to follow up, clarifying question, Attorney Kelly, if I may. So you're pretty much, because of that particular reason, you're questioning whether the expert or objective information could be given based in that report?
Basically, I don't know why the report's here, and he's admitted that he doesn't know who he works for with regards to this application, so it's difficult for other people to evaluate what that evidence is.
So you're pretty much difficult to verify?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Bellis, if you want to respond to that?
I would like to respond. I usually don't get standing ovations at a zoning hearing.
You're popular tonight.
I'll take it this time, thank you. No, let me be perfectly clear so that the commission understands. You may have not recalled the earlier testimony, what was testified to earlier was that Pat Rose's company and Manny Silva as the engineer, that they hired, and they were the ones that looked for recommendations from Mike Klein's company so that they could be incorporated into the design that was presented to the commission. So that's why Michael Klein was a little hesitant in saying to you that he does not have a contract with 500 North Avenue LLC, that is technically true, he does not, and he's not received a check from 500 North LLC, that is also true at this time. And the reason, and I can have him come up and he can verify it, he, as I said, was retained and hired by Pat Rose's company so that he could give them advice on how to present the project. Michael, do you confirm with that?
Attorney Bellis, just so, just so we're clear, so it wasn't so much 500 North Ave LLC contracting Mr. Klein's services, it was expert witnesses that you contracted out, and then in order for them to do their presentation?
They consulted with him?
Yeah.
Mike, was that okay? Was that correct? Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, no, this whole line of questioning was observed, the letter speaks for itself. It's written to Rose Tizo and Company, and it references 500 North Avenue LLC, it references 795 James Farm Road, and it discusses the recommendations that I gave his office regarding erosion, sediment control, and environmental protection aspects of his plan. The letter speaks for itself.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Attorney Kelly, do you have any other questions? If not, I'll entertain questions to the, from the commission. I know, we left off with Commissioner Giuriano, does anybody else have any questions at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Mr., I'm sorry, the engineer?
The engineer, sure.
Thank you.
Manny Silva.
Manny Silva, Mr. Silva, have you had an opportunity to review the memo that was sent to the zoning commission from Deputy Fire Chief John Godfrey?
No.
The letter's dated June 15th, I have some general questions, so you'll have an opportunity to evaluate yourself of that, I'm sure, prior to the close of the hearing. General questions, the truck that would, the piece of apparatus that would service that property in the need of a fire emergency would be a 2015 Seagrave 95-foot tower ladder. The vehicle weighs approximately 72,000 pounds, so the question would be, is the driveway roadway surface area safely able to support 75 psi downward force?
Yes.
At any part of the property, does it have, in the parking area, in the driveway area, more than a five-degree front, back, or five-degree side-to-side pitch?
Five degrees? I'd have to convert degrees into percentage, but the site itself, where he would set up, is about 2%, which is one foot and 50. So that's much flatter, I believe, than 5%. I mean, five, what was the?
A five-degree pitch, front, back, or side-to-side?
Yeah, five degrees, I'd have to do the trigonometry to figure it out.
Okay. Next question would be, if you go to your parking lot map?
Yep.
In what appears to be the southeast corner where you have the parking, right there where your finger is, where you have those two parking spaces, what is the distance between the parking spaces, from my standpoint, on the left-hand side of the display and the right-hand side? What is the distance of driveway between the two? So from the rear bumper of one car, assuming they pulled in face-first, to the rear bumper of another car, what is the distance?
They should, they should be 24 feet?
24 feet?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I have a question to follow up on Commissioner Forster's inquiries. Do you know what the approximate weight, a pound per square inch, the pavement or the gravel could take?
We have a. So we have a, basically, a compacted gravel layer about six inches and three inches of pavement, which is typical for a local street. So what actual force it could take? I don't know offhand.
But is it, but it's. To a public road?
Yeah, it's, it's basically the standard for public streets. I mean, a state highway would require much more, but it's not, I mean, a state highway is something that has a lot of, a lot of traffic. This would be something you would have in a local street. So any local street would have three inches of pavement with about six inches of gravel.
Okay, so it's comparable to James Farm Road or Alpsander Drive?
In fact, I think James Farm Road is probably paved right on dirt, there's no gravel.
Also, I know it's a little bit of a kind of difficulty to determine five degrees as percentage. Is there any sort of analogies, like how much percentage equals what degree, or any sort of?
Yeah, so you do it, you would do the tangent of the degrees, and then you'd figure out the actual slope. Engineering, we usually use percent slope, rise over run, and I'm just not, we don't normally do things in degrees, for pitches, anyway, but it could be figured out. I think, hold on a second here, maybe if I could just do it real quick.
Is it possible for next year for you to convert that to degrees? There's a little trigonometry in.
Yeah, it is, it's just taking the tangent of five degrees, hold on.
So for all the math teachers out there, trigonometry actually has some real-world application, as you've seen just now.
I'd have to get back to you on that, but, I'm like on the spot here. But I think, but what's important to say is that where the apparatus would set up in front or behind the buildings is basically at 2%. So 2% is essentially flat, I mean, it's what you would require for a handicap-accessible route so the wheelchair wouldn't start rolling on its own.
Okay, I imagine the fire department doesn't operate with the same sort of metrics that engineering might, so that's probably why they have degrees.
No, I understand, I completely understand.
So this way, the commission is able to compare apples to apples?
Right, right, I'll convert five degrees into, I'll just have to get back to you, because.
Sure thing, we'll probably have enough of hearing before, so you don't need to crunch those numbers tonight.
It's just that, you know, when everybody's looking at me, it's harder to think.
There's a little trigonometry involved in that, it takes a little focus.
Not a problem.
Thank you, any other questions for the applicant? Thank you for your testimony. Any final questions or remarks from the commission? Going once, going twice? Do any of the, Attorney Kupick?
You're going to ask for people to speak in favor, I suppose?
Hypothetically, public testimony for or against. So I'll open this up to members of the public. Before I do that, I just want to ask the applicant if they want to keep their experts on hand, because we are going to let the public speak now to voice their opinions on the application.
I can leave them here, yes.
Oh, thank you very much.
At your request, okay.
So first, I'll read off the names of those who signed in. So first, I'll read off the names of those who signed in, and then, once we get through this, I'll ask if there's anyone still remaining after that. So first, I have Karen Rodea. Karen, if you want to take the stand.
Mr. Chairman, could we just get the intervention verified pleadings out of the way?
Oh, sure thing.
Okay, great.
One moment, Ms. Rodea.
Joseph Kubik for Judith Kermey, Kathleen Martinez, and Concerned Citizens Group of Stratford, which is a non-stock Connecticut corporation formed by the neighbors surrounding the property. I'm submitting three original verified pleadings into the record, signed by my clients, and on behalf of Concerned Citizens Group of Stratford, entering my appearance in this matter. This is a 2219 petition concerning environmental concerns, which are set forth in quite lengthy, setting forth quite lengthy, lengthy matter, and also concerning historical and cultural matters, which are permitted as well by statute. I'm going to submit letters, a letter from our soil scientist, Stephen Danzer, PhD, who is present here tonight, into the record, in support of the application, in support of the verified pleading. You already have the Yukon Matters. I'm going to submit the natural diversity database areas into the record, with the yellow highlighted spot showing the location of the property.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a quick question. Don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Kubik, but you do realize you have a typographical layer in your filing. Very first sentence, 795 Jones Farm Road in Stratford. My recollection, there is no Jones Farm Road.
It's James Farm Road, that is.
So for the record, Jones should be a James.
It's a James. So based upon this petition, we request, based on Mr. Danzer's statements, we've already, you've heard from the Conservation Commission, you've heard from the Planning Commission, you've got letter, emails from Christina Beto concerning the environmental nature of the property, I'm submitting to the record, I think there was eight or so there. We request that this matter be referred to the Inland Wetlands Commission due to the sensitive nature of the project, of the location and the surrounding properties, wildlife, nature, natural resources, as well as the cultural and historical nature of the property.
Do you have a copy of it, please?
I'll give it to you.
Usually you get a copy certified.
Yeah, in a court of law, but this isn't a court of law.
I'll instruct the...
It's only a court when he's cross-examining, not when he's...
I'll instruct the planning and zoning administrator to provide all attorneys with copies of the documents submitted to record.
Thank you.
Attorney Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Kevin Kelly of Kevin Kelly and Associates, representing the town of Stratford. I also have a verified pleading pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 22819. We also believe that this development will impair, or has a likelihood of impairment of a wetland resource adjacent to the parcel, and that the protection of wetlands is in the public interest, and therefore, we need to protect such resource from degradation. Your regulations are replete with jurisdiction to handle environmental issues, particularly Section 3.24 does that. So I have a verified pleading signed by Christopher Timniak, the chief administrative officer of the town of Stratford. I'm going to provide an original copy, together with copies for the commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney. At this point, I'll entertain members of the public who want to speak in any position in regards to this application. I'll read off the names in order on which they're received, and then I'll open it up to anyone who missed the writing of the list. Ms. Rodea, if you want to go first, you're more than welcome.
Good evening, Karen Rodea, 2115 Cut Spring Road. I'm here on behalf of myself, as well as the Conservation Commission. I'll start with the Conservation Commission. They have grave, grave concerns over the project, the density of the project, the amount of cubic yards of fill going in, and the sediment erosion control. Because with that volume of fill, it is impossible to have good erosion control, especially with that type of sloping. So that being said, I mean, I feel that this plan is inadequate, after looking at it, reviewing all the details, which there are very few. I don't even think that you all should vote on it, because it's an incomplete plan. That's my own personal opinion. I question the amount of impervious surface on this parcel, and all the different lines that you see with proposals, it's hard to tell whether it's going to be 100% impervious with a 2% green spot, or if it's going to be something else. I do not believe that it is your job, or Mr. Hibansky's job, or anybody else's job to do their job. That being said, the storm rates that have, storm rate calculations, I didn't see 100-year storm rate calculation, and quite honestly, with the sloping of that property, and the fact that it's going to be galleries with fill on top of it, when it's going to also be subject to a lot of settling, even with compaction, and I promise you, it will happen, even though they'll tell you it won't, it will. I want to know what's in place for stormwater management if the galleries fail, because there's a likelihood of that happening, and on that particular parcel, it's really likely, and it's mostly because of the amount of fill that's going in there. I also wanted to find out, and this is personal, there's a lot of people up there that have wells, and the compaction is going to rattle everything, and it's not like just limited to that one little parcel. It reverberates all around, and it could disturb the wells, changing the water quality. I want to know what safeguards the applicant is going to put in place to protect the people that have had wells up there for many, many years, long before this project. The traffic study, the traffic study. Let me tell you, I would strongly discredit that traffic study. After living through Avalon Bay's traffic study, and their proposed numbers and all that stuff, it was all bogus. It is so incorrect, it is not even remotely close, not even remotely close. So if you have 72 units, you're only going to have 22 people leaving in the morning? What do you have, everybody not working? Is that what the kind of? I mean, seriously? They told us with Avalon Bay that there was going to be this minimal amount of traffic in the morning with school. Let me tell you, I'm surprised a kid hasn't been killed yet up there. And also, their student number projections, way off. Do you have student number projections for this proposal? You should. I also want to know where the secondary emergency egress is, because I didn't see it. I didn't see it. And it has, you have to have one in that kind of a facility, you have to have it. I have concerns over snow removal. If you leave the snow on the property, it is going to bypass the galleries, and it's going to go down into the wetland and infiltrate down that way from the snow, and it'll be contaminated, because the cars are in the driveway, et cetera. What provisions are made for the snow removal from the property? That's a big one. We've had a lot of storms the past few years. Emergency turning radiuses, I'm looking at the plan, and I'm like, is this enough? It didn't look like enough to me. I know we had a major problem with it with Avalon, and I think that this should have to comply equally with the secondary egress, and the turning radiuses, it's insufficient. Sewers are not in place up there, and someone had brought up before the traffic issue when they're putting sewers in. No one has addressed the blasting issue. The whole reason there are no sewers up there is it's all ledge. That's why there's no sewers. So how are you going to address the blasting issue when you have well water everywhere around you? I just, I don't know. And I also wanted to know the damage control that they're going to have in place to the surrounding homes for the compaction issues, because there will be damage. So there should be an insurance policy in place. It should go, you know, like 1,000 yards, or whatever, I mean, half a mile, because it's going to shake that whole area. I mean, and I know that, because I lived next door to where they compacted for a house, and that was minimal compaction, by comparison to what they're doing on this project. It shook things off the walls, it did damage to the property, I mean, it's problematic. So there's a lot of things that need to be addressed. These are just some. I'm sure everybody else has a lot more, but this is an incomplete project, and I think you should just send it back to the drawing board. And one final thing, I find it very insulting that Mr. Greenshirt over here did not respond to the questions that the public has a right to know, whether he has a conflict of interest in his services. So shame on him, and I think you should throw his report out also. Thank you.
Mr. Hall, if you would like to speak, please feel free.
My name is Thomas Hall. I live at 35 Coach House Road, which is right on the edge of James Farm Road. I also own the property lot on the other end of the street, so my property extends from James Farm Road, on James Farm Road, from Coach House to Alexandra. Most of us would probably agree that this affordable housing business is a good thing, but it certainly doesn't fit in this particular neighborhood. First of all, we're all one-acre, single-family residences, and we're talking about putting 72 apartments in the middle. Every house around the whole area is one lot, one residence. The location for that is just, it doesn't fit the area at all. Situation here we have is obvious. If this were a great deal, everybody'd be happy in this place, it'd be empty. Obviously, there's a crowd in here. It's not a great deal. It doesn't fit the area. We all basically, I've just said that, we don't feel it'd be right for this location. The three buildings they're talking about putting in here, it's horrendous. For us, we've gone to a lot of trouble to buy our property and put it, you know, build it and do what we have here, and we're very happy with our peaceful area, but you start putting 72 apartments in there, we've got a mess. Basically, if you put that in there, it's going to totally destroy this neighborhood. This is going to, this is certainly going to create impulsion and mess up the environment and the wildlife that we have here. And that's a nice thing for us, we enjoy watching the different wildlife in the area, and when they get finished, it won't be around anymore. We have the young lady that spoke, was talking regarding sewers. We think they're a terrible idea, just because, if nothing else, we're going to get hit with assessments for sewers that we don't have now. Another issue, of course, is we have wells, and I'm, for one, very worried about blasting anywhere near us, because you can blast a mile away and cause my water to be messed up. It's a very difficult situation from that angle. Basically, we just don't want anybody to take away what we've had, to work hard for all these years, and somebody just comes in with no benefit for us whatsoever. It can only be detrimental to the people in the area. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Rivera?
Good evening, my name's David Rivera. I reside at 85 Larchmont Circle, here in town. I am here today to express to you all that I am not in favor of this development. If you look at everything that was proposed in terms of the traffic study, on, by trade, I am a police officer. If you look at the traffic study, it just doesn't make sense. I could pick certain hours within high-traffic times and say that it's only 22 cars, but then the hour before and after may have been 21 cars. So I would really appreciate a traffic study that took into account the entire high-volume traffic. Besides that, looking at the letter that was given to the commission by the deputy chief, the fire department's deputy chief on June 15th, there were a lot of concerns that he brought up concerning the egress, the apparatuses not being able to turn properly in that development. Along with that, he actually expressed his concern for the 20-foot retaining wall that was being built on the property, in terms of the ladders extending and being too close to those high-power lines. I, for one, love our firemen, and do not want them to be put in any more danger than they have to be put in. They have a tough job. Along with that, the deputy chief expressed the fact that his apparatuses will be reduced in response time for, to having to, would be reduced in response time, having to back up from that property. And he also expressed his concern for snow and ice in that driveway when getting to that property. I recently moved to the town, within the last year, and my wife and I, and our baby boy, live in our home. You know, we moved to Stratford for a better life, and I moved from the city of Bridgeport. I, for one, can say that I know what housing, affordable housing complexes does to a community. And this complex, going into this area, is just opening up a can of worms for more developments that come in, that is totally going to ruin my neighborhood. I can tell you right now, that development going in is going to lower my property value. And, you know, I paid a lot for my house, so I would urge this commission to look at all the facts and make a wise decision into not allowing this development into our community that has been zoned, a one-acre zone, for a reason. Thank you.
Mr. Rivera, I have a couple of questions. Thank you for your testimony.
I'm sorry, Karen.
Thank you for your testimony. How many years were you on the force?
I am currently still on the force. I've been a police officer for five years.
With any particular municipality?
Yes. I worked for the city of Bridgeport for three years, I now work for the town of New Canaan.
Okay. And typically, from your experience in the police department, and then any training you had prior to that, with traffic studies, do they normally just take one hour, or do they range across the board, or?
It all depends. As a police department, we like to look at the entire high-traffic volume. You know, to pick and choose isn't going to give you or I a better assessment of how many cars are going in there. This proposed development has 100, more than 150 spots, parking spots. So to say that there's only going to be 22 to 28 at different times, it just... So to say that there's only going to be 22 to 28 at different times, it just doesn't make sense. If you have 100 and more than 150 spots, you know, I can't see how it's, there's going to be 22 cars coming in and out of that driveway at high-peak hours, especially if most of these individuals are going to be working. So in my professional experience, I would say that those numbers don't add up.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Rivera.
Mr. Silva, can you put that down for us? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Jay Sheehy. I reside at 190 Chapel Street, and I've lived in town for a number of years. And I think this particular project is completely inappropriate for that site for a number of reasons, but my main concerns with it revolve around the impact on the wetlands, which are adjacent to the property, plus some of the traffic and safety issues. You've got the firehouse there. You've got a lot of construction activity going on, and I would echo the previous speaker's comments regarding the traffic patterns. Unless those people are just not working and not coming out, I just don't see how that 20 cars will be the only peak time during the morning. So I would urge the commission, A, to refer it to the Wetlands Commission for further study, plus try to be sure that this is what it's purported to be, which I question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehy.
My name is Sonia Devitt. I live at 545 Hilltop Drive. I have more questions than I have, you know, comments. But I guess my questions are implicit in my comments. To justify, because we're really talking about changing a zone, we're changing from RS1 to, I guess, multifamily or some such. To justify a zone change, there should be a compelling reason, I think. And so what is the compelling reason to change it? My guess is that the compelling reason might be to increase our affordable housing in Stratford. And it is true, we really do need an increase of affordable housing in Stratford. But especially to develop an affordable housing project, it has to really be financially viable. And if it has to be financially viable under the Affordable Housing Act, so that if you should deny the application for one reason or another, if the developer wants to appeal it, he has to do it under the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure, Connecticut General Statutes, Section 80G. And the criteria he has to meet have to do with, it has to follow certain affordable housing criteria. And that has to do with a certain number of units have to be at 80% or at 60% of median income. Median income in Stratford is $67,375 for a household. Per capita, it's $33,805. If you then look at 30% of that, which is what's considered affordable, that a person can afford, not under the definition of what is affordable housing, but what people can afford to spend on housing, which is, the rule of thumb is 30%, that means the maximum they can spend on housing is $20,000 if at median, or $10,000 per capita. When you're going to be setting then the costs of the units, and I don't know whether these are rentals or condos or co-ops, but I question whether, without tax subsidies and/or tax breaks or some other kind of subsidy, how is this going to be viable for the 40 years that are required under deed restrictions for affordable housing under the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure? So it seems to me that we have to look at, down the road at that, and not just whether it's appropriate to put some form of multifamily or affordable housing here, but whether it meets all the criteria from which this could be appealed. And I think, just looking at the property, it looks to me as though it's going to be a really expensive piece of property to develop, and that's why I wonder if it's going to meet affordable housing criteria down the road. It is heavily wooded. It's tremendously steep. I would hate to drive up some of those driveways and out onto James Farms Road. So there's going to have to be some leveling, some drainage problems. It's going to need to be an awful lot of site preparation before you even get started with construction. So if the project is expensive, how is it viable long-term, not immediately maybe, but long-term, to sustain a project that the people for whom it is designed can afford? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Devitt.
Robert Smith, 135 Pepper Ridge Circle, Stratford, Connecticut. I have two pictures I'd like to show, and then I'll give them to you. These I came upon on May 9th at 3:00 on Old Main Street. I'll show them to the group first, and I'll pass them around. Okay? And this is a jeep followed into the back of a bus at 3:00 in the afternoon.
Sir, I just need you to speak into the microphone.
Now, I'm going to pass these to you. I just want to show them to the group. And my concern here, we've heard enough about money and who's going to benefit from this and what's happened or whatever, but my concern are the kids. Which resulted in a couple of letters to Planning and Zoning, May 31st, 2016. The kids in the bus, buses, an accident that resulted in my writing this letter. On May 9th at 3:00 on Old Main Street near Meadowmere Road, and you can see in the pictures, there's a sign of Meadowmere Road. A bus was coming from Flood Junior High School. I was going to my house on Pepper Ridge Circle and saw the accident. I took some pictures with my phone from Meadowmere Road and left because the police had blocked traffic. I had to use Chapel Street. Chapel Street itself was the only road that was open at that point on. All of Old Main Street was blocked off. And remember now, this is 3:00. Okay? So we can start thinking about the traffic survey a little bit. I noticed that all activity in front of Chapel Street Elementary Schools, where a group of students were waiting for their bus. All other vehicles were gone. Only the teachers and students were there. I went home. I felt upset about what I had seen and the children waiting at the school for their buses. I thought about the major impact of the safety of the children regarding the housing project applications to building a 72-unit complex with 146 parking spaces on James Farms Road. Here are my thoughts. We have Avalon, and now we're looking at three more applications. The students on both Chapel and Flood are transported by bus. All of the roads they travel on are single-lane highways. The release time for the students, and this is the part that you have to think about a little bit, comes at the height of the traffic congestion on James Farms Road with the release and entry of workers going to Sikorsky, people coming home from Route 15, Shelton, and people coming down to Main Street to the valley to go to I-95. Think about it. Sikorsky releases at, you have to start work on the second shift, and they release at 3:00. So you have to be there before 3:00. So all these people are on the roads. The proposal is in place for a unit on the road that cannot handle this peak-hour traffic And if you look in front of the schools, and you look at the buses, and you look at this peak-hour traffic, and you look at Oranoke Lane, and you look at the concerns that Sikorsky has, I'll call it Sikorsky, whatever its name happens to be now, and all the concerns that they happen to have with their shifts and how they're trying to alternate and doing all of this, and they can't. And they can't. They cannot do this. But all of these people who are already there, already there, the kids have to be bused, there's no crossing guards, crosswalks, okay? It's a major safety issue. An example and a comparison of what can result. I lived on Windsor Avenue in Paradise Green for many years, 297. Okay? I remember there was a student killed there in 2004 on the corner of Wilcoxen and East Main Street. East Main Street is a busy street where cars moving faster than they should. Right turns are allowed on red lights. People are pulling out in side streets and driveways for anyone on foot. Trying to cross the street is extremely dangerous. The town had to settle a lawsuit because a young male student was killed when an experienced town truck driver was turning right on red. There was no crossing guard to assist the boy. The driver never saw him. The boy crossed the street in the corner where the bus picked him up for school. I choose only to say the boy did nothing wrong. And you can take it for that. You can turn a blind eye to prevent the safety issues that will be caused by the proposed 72-unit complex, but I have to ask you, how do you honestly believe that all the additional traffic from the complex, with the possibility of 146 additional cars coming and going, the increase of children waiting for their school buses, they're already extremely busy, James Farms Road with its many side streets and driveways, will not dramatically increase the accidents or another terrible loss of life? You think that's not going to happen? Instead, I hope we choose to prevent making this area unsafe for kids and their school buses, and please deny this application. Okay? I have other things to say, and I also have copies of the letters.
Mr. Smith, do you want this submitted into record?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Do you want both of them? I think they're the same, right? Do you want to keep one?
No, you could have them both.
Both? Okay. And you want this submitted into record as well?
Yes, I do. It would be great to get a school bus schedule, what time they start and pick up kids. Since normally kids have to be in school at 8:00, and buses are on the road at 7:00, sometimes beforehand to pick up students and get them in because classes do start at 8:00, and you have to be there in your seat. So we have started on this school schedule and this traffic schedule to kind of eliminate, and, you know, we've taken a look at Harvest Ridge, but we haven't taken a look at all the roads that are impacted by school buses going down and picking up students. Okay? The Sikorsky shift schedule, we have release on the third shift at 6:00. We have traffic coming in from 6:00 to 7:00. We have office traffic from 8:00 to 9:00. All conflicts with the schools. And when you think about it, the roads that get you to Sikorsky, and you think about the schools, and you think about the traffic, and you think about the buses, does that conflict? Does a traffic study on James Farms Road take all of these things into consideration? Well, do they? School buses stop at each corner to pick up children due to the safety rules about children. You can't congregate now on a corner. You have to wait. Usually, a parent is there for the safety reasons that are there. The bus stops, picks up the students, goes to the next corner, picks up the students up and down the streets and whatever. That's what James Farms Road is used for, and before 7:00. Now, how many more cars are going to be on the roads with these projects? Statistically, we are increasing the number of cars that are going to be on these roads, and so what we're going to do is we are going to increase the opportunity of a traffic accident that will happen, and we already have pictures of one now at 3:00. How does the bridge on James Farms Road between Shelton and Stratford come into play? It's hard to get over now. Buses go to the town line. Now, there was a 28-second delay, I think, made on cars for traffic going over. Now, you take 28 seconds, you take 28 seconds, you take 28 seconds, you take 28 seconds, you take the school buses and whatever, and, you know, that's a pretty simple number to come up with. But the compacting of all of this is something that causes a traffic jam. And you travel that road at 4:00, and you'll see it. Now, not being a public figure, I can't get these records because if I go and I ask for them, somebody questions why I want them, and they should. But they need to be here, and we need to know that Sikorsky is very concerned about the flow of traffic down there. They're very concerned. The, and to talk of some other things. In the, the number-one cause of children being injured from the ages 5 to 14, okay? Traffic accidents, 5 to 14. We take a look at other issues when the studies, as I said. Take a look at the traffic studies and when they were done. Take a look at when the buses travel. Take a look at when the traffic comes into play. Take a look at when shift starts, and you have to be there ahead of time. Take a look at all of these items and bring them into play. And how much sense does this make? According to insurance... According to insurance, a survey found that 52% of reported crashes occur five minutes or less from the home, and a whopping 77% occur 15 miles or less from home, okay? So we're going to plug all that housing in right into an area which is the number-one accident occurrence area that we have based on every insurance company that you go online and you take a look at. One mile or less, 23% of the accidents. 2.2 to 5 miles or less, 29%. 6 to 10 miles, 17%. That takes you to 69% of the accidents that happen already, just the way it is now, just the way it is now, without adding any of this. I look at all of this and I say, you can look at all of these other reasons. And I lived on Windsor Avenue and I experienced what happened with the child down there. I travel the roads there every day, I look at the traffic, I look at the accumulation of buses in front of Chapel and Flood. I look at the way they travel, I look at the special ed buses come, they come to my street, they bring them at all different times or whatever, and so what do we do? We have a situation right now where we have to manage all of this in peak hours, and it's difficult to do. So what is our re-answer to this? Let's turn around and we'll add more traffic to it. Let's increase the odds of something bad happening. Let's do that. It doesn't make any sense to me. I'm going to say this, and you know what? I'm going to say this, and I really don't care much how it's received or not, but Bob Dylan at one time, he said, money doesn't yell, it swears. And you know what? It's swearing here tonight. So let's stop the swearing, let's use common sense, let's protect the kids. I've seen this happen, it needs to stop. Every federal agency has said, the only way that you stop things like this, whether they're environmental or they're things like this or whatever, are at the point of origin. So let's stop this at the point of origin.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Strazza, you're next.
Mr. Chairman, how many more do we have on the signed up?
Three more, but it's a public hearing, so anybody who wants to speak is entitled to speak.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Susan Strazza. I reside at 15 Oren Oak Lane. Just a little background, my husband and I moved in 1986 to Stratford. We thought it was a lovely area to raise our family. We originally moved to Sherwood Place on the south end of town, lived there for almost 20 years. Keating Ford was Keating Ford, now it's this humongous, ugly place. Many units there. I don't know, are they all filled? Because there's a lot there. Now on Oren Oak Lane, I live right on the corner of Oren Oak and James Farms. I've seen numerous accidents, numerous accidents. A car threw a house, a man laying in my driveway hit on a motorcycle, numerous. People don't stop. I've always told the police department, please stay in my driveway, you'll make a fortune. I just don't think this will fit our area. We moved because we wanted more property. From what I believe, it was an acre zoning, and I don't know how all of these apartments are going to fit the area. I worry because I have a well. I don't want my well compromised. We don't have sewers, we have septics. I don't want that compromised. So I don't think this is a good fit. I oppose it, and I hope you guys will listen to us. Thank you.
Ms. Sharp?
Hi, I'm Sandy Sharp, and I live at 165 Alexandra Drive, which is, you know, right down the street from the proposed offset driveway. Everything that I've been feeling other people have already stated, but I wanted to go on record as opposing this development for many of the before-mentioned reasons. And the woman before me just mentioned the, how busy James Farm Road is, and that was one of the reasons I was going to say. I walk my dog there all the time, and no one stopped, so very few people at that rush hour time stop at the stop sign on the corner of James Farm Road and Oren Oak Lane. You could just watch them go right through. And letting out from all the development in Shelton there, and Sikorsky, and going the Parkway and Brute, it is a very, it's very busy at those certain times. I oppose the project because of its close proximity to the wetlands, and I urge the zoning to go back and look through the deeds to see in the history of the project because I'm just not 100% sure that the wetlands aren't on the project, or at least the project before it was, the lot before it was perhaps divided. I oppose the project because of the destruction it's going to do to the forest. There's deer, fox, all sorts of birds, turtle, box turtles I've seen, all sorts of animals live in that area. I oppose the project especially because of our wells. And before they, if they, if they ever, guess the situation where you consider having them built, I would want an independent study to see how this would, could possibly contaminate our wells, and maybe have the 500 North Ave have to set aside a contingency fund or buy insurance so that if our wells get contaminated or damaged during the blasting, that we will be covered for that and not have to pay for city water to be installed. I also, I have my master's in public health, and I know the intent of affordable housing isn't to build high-density dwellings right under or in very close proximity to high-tension wires. I, I don't think that this is, I wouldn't want to live right there in a high-density housing with no bus line, no recreation area, significant one. Avalon has a beautiful pool. This would have no nice pool, tennis court, nothing, maybe a little fire pit or something. But between the, no sidewalks going to the schools, down the, there's no continuous sidewalk going from Oren Oak Lane to Chapel Street or Flood Junior High. So that doesn't make sense either. So, and no stores nearby. It's not, I could see the Keating Ford property, they were pushing that near the train station, walk to the train. This is out, and everybody would need a car, there's no bus line, no services, no stores. It just doesn't make any sense. So I, for all these reasons, I really urge you to not let this building project be developed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sharp, I have a question. Ms. Sharp? Ms. Pruitt, if you want to take the stand, please feel free. Merrill Pruitt?
No worries.
Take your time. Ms. Pruitt, I also have a letter and receipt from you as well, too, if you want to just also reference that briefly.
Okay, thank you. I'm Merrill Pruitt at 575 Peters Lane in Stratford. You mentioned the letters. I had sort of an order I was going to go in, but why don't I skip to that letter business? And I ask for leniency from you tonight. I have received so many letters, and I want to make sure that you get a copy of each one of them, and it's, it's a huge, it's huge. And I want to make sure that there are no duplications. In other words, if someone handed me a copy tonight, and then some people have emailed me and that sort of thing, so if you could give me a couple of days to get it together, and I'll give you a whole packet, is that all right?
Sure thing. In addition to that, I know the commission itself, and I also received some letters in the mail or by email, which I'll wait till the last hearing to give people the most time to collect their thoughts and articulate their positions on the subject. So this likely won't be the last hearing tonight, because I know the applicant and also possibly Attorney Kalian and Attorney Kubick may want to prepare some more testimony before we conclude hearing. So with that said, it's not going to be a closed public hearing, so if people want to write to the commission, they still have time to do so.
That's outstanding. That sounds terrific. I'll be glad to make more copies and do whatever is necessary to bring people's words forward to you. And would you prefer I not, like, go through and, I was going to read some of the samples of the letters, but it might take a while, so...
That's entirely up to you. You're the speaker, it's your floor if you want to talk about your positions or if you want to enter other people's testimony into record, it's your floor.
One of the first ones I would like to share with you and the audience here is from Pamela She lives at 95 James Farm Road. I am writing this email to tell you, sorry, I have to correct that. She lives at 115 Chapel Street, I apologize. I am writing this email to tell you how disturbed I am that the petition of 500 North Avenue LLC to build 72 affordable housing units is even being considered. I have lived in my home on Chapel Street for almost 27 years, paying extremely high taxes, but accepting these bills as what must be paid to live in a residential one-acre zone neighborhood. On many days, I have had to sit through three or four rotations of the traffic light at the base of Putney Main Street during key hours due to the increasing traffic caused by the development on Cut Spring Road and now the closing of Route 110. I cannot even imagine what the impact of adding all of these units would do to the traffic flow, as well as the number of cars speeding up and down Chapel Street at all hours of the day and night. I would also be concerned for the safety and well-being of the potential residents of this development. There are no sidewalks on sections of James Farm Road and Chapel Street. This is a recipe for disaster, as there would be children who might be riding their bikes, residents walking their dogs, and seniors just out for a stroll who would be at risk to be hit by drivers speeding along these roads. When I first moved to Chapel Street, the area was home to so many forest creatures. There were literally herds of deer that would wander through the property almost on a daily basis, lots of wild turkeys, tons of little bunnies, and even occasional foxes dashing through my yard. However, soon after the Cut Spring Road development, these animals just disappeared. It is now a rare moment to sight even a single deer, and it seems that all the rabbits are gone. Developing more wooded land into a concrete jungle would further damage the ecology of the area. Removing all of those trees would increase pollution in the area. What about our schools? Chapel Street School and Flood Junior High School have already been pushed to the limit by busing in students from the south end of town, and now the potential of adding 72 more families with children would most likely force the town to build additions to the existing structures. This would simply require more taxpayer dollars, more construction, more noise, dirt, and pollution. Looking at the design of this project is frightening. The wall that is proposed in order to build these units is absolutely an eyesore, a preposterous idea, and possibly a danger. Do you have any idea how many large, noisy trucks it would take to simply deliver the cement necessary to build this monstrosity? Is this to be Connecticut's answer to the Great Wall of China? One only needs to look at the prices of the homes sold listed in the Connecticut Post each Sunday to realize that while property values in other neighboring towns continue to rise, Stratford's home values continue to plummet. This section is one of the last areas of the town where prices have been able to at least level, but something like this project would destroy the neighborhood and the values of the surrounding homes, and they too would quickly join the race to the bottom. All of the years of paying high taxes should afford our neighborhood some measure of protection from this type of get-rich-project for this developer. This plan is outrageous. I could go on and on covering many more problems that this construction would cause, but enough said. So to review, please consider the traffic problems, the construction noise and pollution, the loss of wildlife and forest area, the need to expand the schools, the safety of the current and potential residents, the violation of the one-acre zoning in the neighborhood, and the ridiculous design elements of this project, and as Nancy Reagan once said, "Just This is another letter from Lisa Scanlon. She lives at 195 Peters Lane in Stratford. Dear Commissioners, I reside at 195 Peters Lane in Stratford, Connecticut. Over the course of the last couple of years, I have needed emergency medical treatment and care and received same from the first responders located at the Oren Oak Firehouse. It has come to my attention that with the blockage of James Farm Road due to sewer construction, my ability to obtain first responder treatment will be greatly diminished. In fact, may take as much as two to three minutes longer for emergency personnel to get to my home. The last couple of years, I have had emergency calls in which I might quite well have died if the emergency personnel did not respond as quickly as they did. I request that the petition of 500 North Avenue LLC to construct 72 units of affordable housing at 795 James Farm Road be denied for sewer construction. I request this denial fact, fact, factually, because for such a project to be built, sewers must be extended 2,000 feet from Harvest Ridge and will effectively close down James Farm Road, jeopardizing my health and well-being and that of my neighbors. I believe that this is a very significant public safety and public health matter. Therefore, I request that the petition be denied. I have lived in North Stratford for 76 years, and in my present home within a mile of this proposed construction for 41 years, and thus am concerned with the quality of all life in this area, including that of the ecology. This is from Janet Jacobian, and she lives at 100 Surrey Lane in Stratford. This proposal, in my opinion, should not be considered for this particular parcel of land for several reasons. The land on which this complex would be erected is sloped at an exceptional decline, abutting Stratford's treasured Roosevelt Forest, which is abundant with flora, fauna, and wetlands as well. A rental apartment complex for occupants of 72-plus or minus units would bring increased traffic, human and vehicle noise pollution, and light pollution. Proper lighting is necessary for parking lot safety. Increased activity of regularly scheduled services, i.e. garbage removal, mail delivery, et cetera, would bring noise and agitation to the area, abutting the protected forest area thereby threatening the bird and animal inhabitants. Need for increased town services in the Oren Oak Roosevelt Forest area public works, police, fire, emergency medical would create a traffic and noise concern. Need for increased educational services and the accompanying busing of those students must also be considered as cost to the taxpayers of Stratford. In addition to the single-family residential population in the In addition to the single-family residential population in the Orinoc area and the condominiums in Orinoc Village, North and South Trails, Tudor Ridge, Farmell, and Hickory Woods are the nursing facilities of Lord Chamberlain and Atria, all depending upon town services. Adding the occupants of this apartment complex to the existing population will stretch town services to a dangerous point unless there are more town employee hires. Homes in this area are on well and septic systems. If city sewers were to be brought to this service, this apartment complex, excuse me, if city sewers were to be brought to service this apartment complex, it would need to be at contractor expense, not at the expense of Stratford taxpayers, who would not be beneficiaries of the project. Homes in this area of town are on individual wells, and there is serious concern that the quality of water from these wells would be compromised by the construction of the apartment complex. In the recent past, there was a grave problem with the compromised well water in the very nearby Judith Terrace area, and this became not only a health problem, but also a financial burden. I understand the petitioner has engaged an engineer to address the serious situation of parking lot water runoff, but any increased runoff from the paved areas will impact the forest sanctuary below. The temporary condition created on James Farm Road during project construction would create hardship for all traffic using the road for passage, for the residents in the area, and for fire and medical access to the area, including Chapel Street School and Flood Junior High School. This most certainly could mean a matter of life or death in an emergency situation. The only one to benefit from this project, it seems, is the petitioner, not the wildlife and our Roosevelt Forest, not the town of Stratford, nor its tax-paying residents. It is my belief that this project should not advance. I would like to mention... I would like to mention that in addition to the 30 or 40 other letters here, there are 13 letters from the Orinoc community, and I've been promised that they also will be giving us many more. Those letters all pretty much say the same. I won't read all of those. And my letter about the zone change request, I sent this in April, actually. Dear Zoning Commission Chairman and Members, while providing affordable housing is a concern since our town is at 5.7% compliance, we should not be penalized as taxpayers to supply housing units that will require large-scale changes such as sewer extensions and municipal water in a neighborhood that has well water and septic systems. In addition, any development that will be destructive to animal habitats or wetlands should never be allowed. Further, there are no stores with the walking distance or public transportation provided in the north end neighborhood near 795 James Farm Road, where a current petition is being heard by the zoning commission this April 26th, asking for a zone change to build an affordable housing complex consisting of 72 units and 146 parking spaces on land with a mature forest and a wetlands below it that is adjacent to Roosevelt Forest. The Affordable Housing Law has a bad image because so much corruption seems to be connected to it. It is a social objective to provide decent, low-rent accommodations, but this law is a poor design for accomplishing this task, as it has opened the door to developers seeking to pad their own pockets at the town's and taxpayers' expense. We need programs to help supply housing that are virtually corruption-free, that will not disrupt neighborhoods, destroy forests, and animal habitats, wetlands, or increase costs to surrounding property owners. Building a huge complex at 795 James Farm Road will impact the wetlands and habitat by the animals, as well as possibly pollute the wells of the residents near this property. The blasting required, the destruction of the forest, and the runoff from this development will certainly pollute the wetland area where species of concern live and breed, and it will pollute wells and cause traffic safety hazards on roads surrounding this property. At the very least, the applicant should be required to submit the DEEP form for close examination of this wooded and wetland area, as there are many animal populations this type of construction will affect. Just a week ago, the Senior Director of Conservation for the Connecticut Audubon Society visited Roosevelt Forest and viewed this property. He saw a pair of endangered pied-billed grebes in the pond at Roosevelt Forest. It's a type of duck. I have a picture of it on the presentation.
Ms. Pruitt, what's the name of that duck again?
It's P-I-E-D, as in dog, dash, B as in boy, I-L-L-E-D as in dog, and then the next word is grebes, G-R-E-B as in boy, E-S. And it is an endangered duck. He suspects the great-horned and barred owl both nest in the forest on the property at 795 James Farm Road. I hear them personally. I hear them calling to one another every day in this area. I live on Peters Lane. I'm right there near that forest, and I can hear them all the time. Various amphibians are living in the wetlands of this property, such as spotted painted eastern box and wood turtles, along with peeper and wood frogs. The water quality, the negative impact on the wetlands and habitats, the loss of this forested open space, the municipal cost to the town, and the safety concerns are but a few of the reasons to deny this petition. When the public hearings begin, we ask that you please consider the great harm this will cause to the residents, Roosevelt Forest, and our town, and vote to preserve this property by denying a zone change to this applicant. I want to set these aside for a moment, and... I don't know if you got a chance to look at this or not?
Do you want to put up the easel?
Sure, the easel for a moment.
Thank you, Mrs. Silva. If you move the microphone over, you should be able to be caught on it.
Okay. This is the pied-billed grebe right here. And I had a volunteer help me put the board together, so we tried to organize it with some raptors and owls and ducks. There's some songbirds, warblers, colorful birds, and they're labeled as to whether they are endangered or of special concern. The eastern box turtle, I have a presentation of that. I'll just put it over the other one. So these are some of the reptiles as well. And for your convenience, I have a copy from the DEEP that I will give you, and it will list the animals and birds that are in this area. Here we go. I'll give you that, pass them around. So what that says is it's about saving the environment and the birds and animals in it. And I've listed what the definition is of endangered species, threatened species, and species of special concern, which comes from the DEEP. And they have circles drawn on the map in Connecticut, and they show different wetlands and forest habitats, and they are circled based on their going out and examining those areas at periods of time when they have enough personnel to do that. So this list that I'm going to give you tonight will include a lot of their research on this particular area, including the sharp-shinned hawk, which has been also sighted in this area. As you recall, when we were talking about 450 James Farm Road, there's a tower nearby, and that tower has an osprey nest on it. And the sharp-shinned hawk flies up there occasionally and sits on the edge of that tower as well. So that is also a very endangered bird. So you will have that information that you can look at, and hopefully you will be able to spend a moment at some time looking at these birds and animals, and I think it makes it a little more real. I have another subject with this. Tonight, just before I came, Pete Penny, who lives in Orinoc area, alerted me to the fact that the Town of Stratford website has some information about the traffic that we've been talking about tonight. And what he said was that maybe you would like to have a copy of that. So I brought it as a short paragraph, but it came up tonight when we were talking about Armstrong Road and Cranberry Pond and that area. So right on the Town of Stratford website, it says, "Cranberry Pond is a private pond possessing unique and amazing scenery and landscape views. Much of Cranberry Pond may be viewed from either James Farm Road or Armstrong Road. James Farm Road is very narrow as it nears Armstrong Road, and James Farm Road contains some blind curves at its northern extreme. Exercise caution while walking along James Farm Road and viewing Cranberry Pond. James Farm Road is very near Roosevelt Forest, Beaver Dam, and the James Farm Road Open Space Properties." So I will give you those for the record as well. And I believe you'll all be glad to know I'm at the conclusion, which is one more thing Wish I had some water. First, a quote from our town's future land use plan from our town website. "The goal for Stratford's land use and zoning is to strike a balance between residential and industrial-commercial development that will foster economic vitality while preserving the character of neighborhoods and the community. The preservation of neighborhood and community character will be a primary consideration when approving the design of residential development." Unquote. Do you think this application design will preserve, revitalize, and enhance community character? The property is essentially only a few walking steps from Roosevelt Forest, which is a dilemma because there are species here that benefit from a connected landscape. The proposed elimination of this landscape demands these questions. Will the amount of water runoff cause water damage to our property, to wells, and the surrounding community? Will the wetlands on this property become polluted? According to Tina Bada, Administrator, Conservation Commissioner for the Town of Stratford, and a letter to the Town Planner Jay Habansky, the extreme slope of the property warrants sediment and erosion control review by the IWWC. Will wildlife and vegetation be disrupted from natural pathways? Will safe travel be affected on James Farm Road? Will residents in this complex be able to connect to places of work, to transit possibilities, to stores? Further, do any of these questions about the current application meet the town's regulations or goals for Stratford's land use? Isn't it true that the future strain this development will place on the town and its residents will far outweigh any tax credit gained? As you study this application, we ask you to recognize that the protection of this open space and the community surrounding it is in your hands and should not be determined by political gain, tax credits, or short-term gain by developers taking advantage of the law governing affordable housing. Instead, to determine the validity of this application, please consider the nature of the encroaching activity, the functional value of the wetland, the protection of the interior wetland species, and the cultural values of the communities surrounding this property. Stratford is fortunate to have this spectacular forest filled with vibrant, beautiful birds and walking trails that add to the quality of life. We value our neighborhood, our forest, our town. We are in support of development that creates well-designed, well-placed affordable housing, particularly any that do not harm the environment or neighborhoods in which they are located. This is not one we can sit by and watch happen. We respectfully ask this commission to deny this application." Thank you.
Any speaker that didn't sign up who wants to take the stand at this time?
Tina Manis, 315 Foxville Road, 10th District Council. I feel I need to speak today, and I wasn't planning to, because there's some information that I heard presented by the People for the Development that I need to ask some questions about. First of all, I wanted to thank Mr. Cubic, the Honorable Cubic, for being a great neighbor to the people here, and I think you all owe him a debt of gratitude. He was an excellent neighbor to you. We don't always see eye to eye, but the last two times I've seen him stick up for his neighbors has really brought a whole new light to that. As far as the properties regarding the hydrostatic nature of the soils surrounding this property, I'm deeply concerned because the developer mentioned that they understood the hydrostatic properties, and I know for a fact that the WPCA is currently doing a study on the inflow intake, and there have been monitors set up all around town to study this. In fact, the groundwater issues in the north end, where I live on Foxville Road, stretching all the way over to the edge of Shelton, are a concern, the pump stations and how groundwater is affected in those areas. So therefore, we don't have enough information, and I would love for the developers to share that information with the town, because we're actually paying a lot of money to figure that out. So that would be very helpful, and that involves the saturation of the groundwater and as it relates to the sewers in our area. I can tell you that there was an appointment at the last council meeting to the chairman of the Inland Wetlands Commission. That appointment was done by the chairwoman of the council with no input from either District 8 or 9. The council, none of us had any say in that appointment. It was done strictly by the chairperson, and when questions were asked as to why, it was said, "This is through the town charter." The town attorney agreed with her. I still question that, because I'm very concerned that this inland wetland issue, which is a problem in District 10 and obviously in District 9 as well and 8, is being chaired and appointed by only one person, not in consultation with the other counselors, especially the counselor from the James Farm Road Commission, the James Farm Road area. Not to say that the person on the commission wouldn't do a great job, but he is not from District 9. I will tell you, having lived through the blasting at Big Y as a little girl, it is scary, it is obnoxious, and it does change water levels. So again, the hydrostatic nature of the ground will change once the blasting begins or any kind of disturbance to that soil or any kind of anything starts to happen. How do I know this? Because if you go to visit the edge of Washburn Lane, which is in District 10 off of Dogwood, off of Nichols Ave, take your GPS and go there and visit the man that lives at the base. He will tell you that since he's lived there, which has been about 40 years, the forest has slowly come toward him, and now his backyard is a swampland, and he worries about flooding. When I was a little girl, we would stand in our basement up to my waist with water because it would come in through the basement and through the foundation because of the groundwater. Now, the brook that ran behind my house is dry. There's not even mud there. It stopped running. The only answer I have is Big Y and the Big Y complex that was built. It changed the way the earth does business over by where I live. So that is a concern. The inlands, wetlands, do the wetlands change? They're not static. They're living systems. They change, and anything you bring into the ecology, whether you move the animals out and people... And anything you bring into the ecology, whether you move the animals out and people, the animals that burrow and nest and pull things around like the beavers, if you move these things, the whole topography changes. So it's very concerning to say, "Well, this is the way it is now," because it's not going to be the way it is when that development comes in, just like it's not like that anymore with the development that we have behind us, right where I live. The last thing I want to say is the animals that you lost are now in my yard. Tons of bunnies, and coyotes, and skunks, and turkeys, things we never had where I lived. We had one fox and a couple deer. We have all of the animals that were displaced from the last time this happened. Where are the animals going to go? They're losing space. They're all in Veterans Park. It's the last piece of parcel besides Roosevelt Forest, and they are fighting for it. And it's disturbing to see all of these animals being moved around. Finally, I want to say the threat of affordable housing. Scott, you're a good friend of mine. It's no secret. And threatening people with affordable housing is the most heinous act you can do. It's probably the worst thing that can happen to someone. And I am proud to say that, fortunately, Mr. Fuller and Ms. Puppin, you weren't up for election this year, but the three of you sitting on this commission were people that I had a hand in putting here, whether it was Mr. Forrester as an alternate in voting for you to be appointed, whether it was working with you, Mr. Posner, on your election and trying so hard to get you elected. And Mr. Giuliano, I'm putting it all on you. I'm a betting girl, and I took, I sided with somebody in District 9 because I felt like you would care for the people. And what I saw you do today and stand up for the workers that are going to be working in those small confined spaces is exactly the reason why I wanted you up here on this project. So I respect you, and I hope you won't let me down. I'm counting on you to do the right thing by neighbors. I'm counting on you to do the right thing by people, because as we know, Mr. Posner, it doesn't just stop in your backyard. It's a town-wide issue. And these guys hit it on the head. Stratford has to be united on this. We have to make sure that it's planned. I think part of it is that we don't have a planning commissioner. Mr. Habansky, you're new to this, but we used to have zoning and planning, and long ago, planners were done away with. And we could have planned for all of this. And now we're being reactive. And people say, "Oh, well, the, people are coming in to fill a need. We're below a threshold if we had only planned. So let's learn from our mistakes, let's plan, and let's make sure we don't lose the good people we have here who have stayed and paid their taxes, raised their children." I hear letters from the Gelders. I went to school with both of their kids. These are old names, the Scanleys. They've been around a long time. They deserve our respect. They deserve our help and our support, and I hope you guys will be good neighbors to those people up on James Farm Road. Thank you.
Any other speakers who didn't sign up?
Not a politician. I'm not running for office. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Walter Pivim Kunis, reside at 425 Second Avenue, Lordship. But I am involved with the north end because I have, my son lives up there. First of all, I am disappointed. This has nothing to do with zoning. This is spot zoning. We are in the, in the, spot zoning. That's not the way things go. Number two, this is an RS1 district. RS1, what does it mean? One acre or more per household. One acre or more per household. Can you imagine all these people? All the people that have left are still living up there, walk James Farm, want them with the idea that they wanted that room to breathe. They didn't want 72 people on three acres. Seventy-two units on three acres. Bottom floor, one unit apartments, second and third floor, two and three bedrooms. Two and three bedrooms. That's at least one, two cars or more. This traffic thing is a joke. It's a joke. Another thing, as you know, I've came to every one of these meetings. I haven't voiced my opinion. I'm availing them now. I looked at this special agenda. One, two, and three, we got three different things on it. Number one, petition of 500 North Avenue to amend the zoning regulation to create a new section, Julian Ridge Housing Opportunity Development Zone. I had never heard anything presented here at this microphone, or I don't know if you got anything in your flyers about it, but I never saw or heard anything about it. Number two, 795 Jones Farm Road, petition of 500 North Avenue to change the zone to a petition to include the Julian Ridge Housing Opportunity. When was that presented to you? Was it? I don't recall it. Nothing. The only thing that I saw, I've heard all the times that are we here, right away, quick, "We're going to build 72 units on a three and a..." Oh, I'm getting angry. "We are going to build 72 units on three, on three and a half acres." Seventy-two units. That's a heck of a lot of people in a very small confined area. Okay. The zoning regulations of Town of Stratford, page 45, amendments, April 1, 2013, section 4.1.6.11, resident apartments subject to the limitations set forth in 5.3, which is affordable housing. I won't read the whole thing. I'm just going to read the last sentence. "The property to be served for residential apartments must be served by sanitary sewers, stormwater systems, by public utilities, which must include public water supply." I haven't heard any of these coming in. No gas work. We're going to telephone and so on. That's above ground. But there's nothing like that. Public housing, you have to be near for them to get to a shopping center. Where in heck is the nearest shopping center? You're going to walk all the way down to Stop &amp; Shop? Or you're going to go walk all the way up there, up by Sikorsky's? The shopping center way the heck up there? There's no bus line, no public utilities for people on this public subject. It don't compute. No way. It shouldn't have gotten this far. We should still be working on number one, not two and three. Number one. Why did it get this far? I know one, I, oh, he's not there now, but that's not the reason. Let's get back to the facts. Number one, petition to change the zoning regulation to Julian Ridge Housing. Is that all the town going to have that now? Julian Ridge, we're going to put one down there? Another Julian Ridge, we're going to put it up in 10th District? Another, we're going to put it down in Lordship? God, we put everything else down there. Why not put that one down there too? Gentlemen, you've got an adverse thing here. It's not right. I wouldn't even have to take a thing. Vote? No. You haven't got the right information. No way, shape, or form have they presented with you with anything to show what they're trying to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kunis. Any more speakers? Any more speakers?
Hello. My name is Kathy Martinez. Kathy with a C. I live at 800 James Farm Road, right across the street from this development that's proposed. I am totally against this, this development going up. Not as a selfish reason, but as a selfless reason. There's so many good things that we have up there on James Farm Road that bring us to that area, the neighborhood. I echo Sandy Sharp, Tina, sentiments. This is not going to bring anything good for anybody. There's so many beautiful things that happen up there on James Farm Road in terms of the neighborhood, the wildlife. What this, what this proposal would bring would be so much traffic, so much change in a bad way. We want to preserve what we have, and I feel as though what some of the, what the proposal is bringing is some selfishness and wanting to pack their pockets, as I have heard, and moving in that direction, which, looking at safety here, are we looking at the safety of the, of the development, really, in the wildlife, the traffic, the ledge, the blasting? Nothing good is going to come out of this. It's, sounds very hazardous. It sounds like there's nothing good that will come out of it. And for our health reasons of why we're here, our wells, and what that's going to do to our wells, this, the traffic report that was done, that was right in front of my house, and so biased. I think it's very bogus how they did that. They laid it down, they picked it up, and it was very short-term. The wetlands that are there, when it rains, it pours, and there's much, much water that comes down, and the flow of that happens over many years how it has happened, and it's, not that it's settled, but it's, it's moved in that direction of the flow. And once you disrupt that, it's going to be a bad, bad thing that happens, and it's going to alter and change the dynamic of the ecosystem that's there. This project doesn't fit the area. Sure, we want to bring affordable housing into Stratford, but it's like putting, putting a square screw into a round peg. It just doesn't sound right. It doesn't fit. It doesn't smell right. It doesn't feel right. And when you know that, and like, I'm a nurse, and when I look at my patients and I say, "Hmm, something's going on. Doesn't smell right, look, smell right, look right, or feel right on my patient," I'm like, "Uh-uh." Some, there needs to be higher level of people looking at this proposal and saying, "Really? What are we doing here? Are we using a fine-tooth comb and making sure that the safety and the protection of the environment is happening? And the citizens? We move up there, and we have a beautiful area." And I feel as though, and I'm no, I echo my neighbors and what everybody else has said. They're against it. I oppose it. The sewers that would be coming up there too, I just, I oppose it. Don't, don't want it for many good reasons that would protect the area, and that's what I'm about, the safety and the protection of the environment. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any more speakers?
Good evening. I, my name is Judy Kurmay. I live at 45 Alexandra Drive. I appreciate your patience, and I know the hour is late, and I'll try to be as brief as I can. I'm going to read you a letter from my husband. Unfortunately, he was, he's not feeling well, and he couldn't be here this evening. So together, we're speaking with one voice. He says, "I'm sorry I could not attend tonight's hearing personally."
Your husband's name?
My husband's name is Paul Kurmay, K-U-R-M-A-Y. We live at 45 Alexandra Drive. He says he is sorry he could not attend personally, but I'm sending this letter through my wife, Judy, who is also represented by Attorney Joseph Cubic. Judy, that's me, is the legal owner of our home, but we speak with one voice, to oppose the current petition before you. This evening, you will hopefully get to hear the numerous sound reasons why these petitions should not be granted. They include a traffic study, analysis by the police, fire department, concise and overwhelming evidence of adverse environmental damage, concrete challenges to the many engineering design flaws of the project, which threaten the public safety, the failure of the applicants to address specifically how sanitary sewers will be extended to this site, especially in light of virtually universal opposition from the entire neighborhood and many other arguments as well. Many of the promises and allegations made by the applicants are simply untrue. Testimony and evidence will be offered to show that they were disingenuously grandstanding, designed to lure you into the belief that this ill-considered plan is good for the community. Nothing could be further from the truth. Their grandiose concerns for the town are no more than smokescreens to justify an exploitation of our neighborhood for financial gain. The petitioner has attempted and continues to attempt to purchase one piece of undeveloped property after another in this very neighborhood. I assure you, it's not for the benefit of Stratford, but rather for financial benefit. The residents of our town depend upon you to be the guardians of reasonable development in our community, rely upon you to separate the wheat from the chaff, to sort out those projects which promote the public good and those which promote financial gain. For a town to be vibrant but free from exploitation, we need commissioners like yourselves to have the courage and the intelligence to recognize a boondoggle when you see one. We need commissioners like yourselves who know when they are being conned and when they are being told the truth. We need commissioners who sympathize and reflect the very neighborhoods which they have been elected to protect. In a word, we need you to be those neighbors and fellow Stratfordites who will continue to live here long after the developers have come and gone. We simply ask you to weigh the evidence presented to you and determine whether, according to the law, the arguments against this development outweigh those in favor. We hope and believe that you will find that the former is the case. My husband and I thank you for your thoughtful consideration of our views and for sacrificing so much of your valuable time for the good and the welfare of our beloved town. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Kurmay. Any other speakers willing to give testimony tonight?
Hello. I'm Patrick Garfola, 740 James Farm Road. I'm against this project. I feel it's an environmental disaster. The main reason would be the density, to put six buildings, three stories high, 14 units per acre on 4.6 acres. This is a zone for one acre per household. Project is not suitable for this location, nor is the, the area zoned for it. This project will congest an already crowded street. There'll be more school buses because there are no sidewalks. The children in this new complex will have to be bused. So there'll be more buses, no sidewalks for the kids to walk safely to school. There's no fire hydrants on the street in the area. There's no public water there. It's miles away, and we all know about the disasters that have happened in the town due to no water for fires. Houses burned completely to the ground. This project will destroy our environment. It will destroy our neighborhood. It will destroy our natural forest and wildlife. It will destroy our wetlands. It will destroy our wells with contaminants. It will destroy the road being all dug up to try to put sewers through for months at a time. It also will destroy our property values. I'm a real estate broker for 45 years now, and I have never once heard that a project like this would improve a neighborhood. It always has a negative effect. This project will threaten the health, safety, and welfare This project will threaten the health, safety, and welfare of all the citizens living in Stratford and any other people that drive through Stratford. Why should we all lose so much for a developer so he can get capital gain at our expense? This project should be denied. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir, excuse me. Excuse me, sir.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, can you just give me your name again? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Any other speakers?
Members of the commission? My name is Nancy Carroll, and this is my husband, James Carroll. We are the adjoining property owners residing at 770 James Farm Road, directly across the street from the proposed development, and we are objecting to each of the aforementioned petitions of 500 North Avenue LLC. When we purchased our home in 1992, we selected this specific area of North Stratford because of the residential character of the area. The minimum land requirement of one acre per home and the designation as an RS1 district were consistent with our goals for a family home, and we paid a premium to have such a setting. Not only did we purchase our home because of the single-family setting, but also because of the proximity to open space and Roosevelt Forest and the associated wildlife within such an area. We made a choice, just as our neighbors did. We did not choose a commercial area, we did not choose a mixed-use area, we did not choose a multifamily area. We chose an area zoned for single-family homes. To allow a change in zoning would be to ignore the zoning standards and regulations that have been in place in this impacted area for years, and to ignore those who conformed to those regulations as the area was developed. These petitions presented by 500 North Avenue LLC for a zoning change ignore the best interests of the entire residential community that has conformed to the town's regulatory guidance. Zoning standards were established for a large sector of the Stratford electorate, and now a developer is seeking to establish a new standard at the expense of said electorate and for the developer's economic profit. This does not benefit in any way the North Stratford taxpayers. Beyond the adverse impact such a development will have on our real estate value and investment, there would be a serious impact on our quality of life. For a development of this size, the potential for the installation of sewer lines and/or water lines is probable. Safety would be seriously compromised during construction of the same, as road closures would result, and public safety would be restricted from emergency response in a timely manner. Given the lack of proximity to water for existing homeowners, the rapid response of fire apparatus carrying water is imperative to public safety. Any road closures could have catastrophic results. The same analogy can be made for health-related emergency responses. During our 24 years on James Farm Road, we have also seen a tremendous growth in traffic as motorists use this road for local purposes and to access Merritt Parkway and Route 8. The proposed development would have a further adverse impact on traffic as a minimum increase of 72 vehicles, if not more, would be added to the daily flow of vehicles on the roadway. We are concerned with the disruption to the wildlife habitat that is well-established in this area, the increased traffic and the resultant pollution impacting our health, the potential for a negative displacement of our water source as a result of blasting, as the adjacent property owners rely on wells for water, and the impact that construction will have on the response of public safety. Therefore, we ask the zoning commission to preserve the single-family residential area of Stratford and the adjoining open space in Roosevelt Forest by not approving these petitions of 500 North Avenue LLC for zoning changes at 795 James Farm Road, Stratford, and the related development plans. And I'd like to submit this testimony for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers tonight? Any other speakers? Any other speakers? Take a, oh.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, right there.
Good evening, my name is Frances Voight. I'm at 480 James Farm Road, and we have been owners of property up there since the 1930s, so we know it very, very well. I just, I'm going to be very brief, and I just want to make two statements regarding the design, or whatever it was, of the traffic in that area and the children. Two things that should be corrected before we go any further on anything, and that's the end of James Farm Road. Number one, James Farm Road, where, and you have Armstrong crossing over the top. That area of James Farm Road narrows down to one lane, one. I'm amazed that there haven't been a lot more accidents there. Now, our eminent investigator here evidently didn't go back far enough because there have been a lot of people killed right there. Right by Cranberry Pond where that huge tree sits on the right-hand side, you have a lot of trouble manipulating that road unless you know it. I know it because I live there. The other design that's very, very bad with traffic and for the children and for myself is when they changed going up 110, heading into Main Street, Putney. When they made the corner and they took off our lovely, slow entrance into 110. Alls they needed was a stop sign or a flash of a traffic light or some damn thing. Now they have a ditch. When you take that turn, there's a ditch on your right hand, and if you don't manipulate that correctly, you're going to be in a ditch. This has to do with traffic, I'm concerned about the kids, the buses, and myself. But that needs a lot more attention before we move ahead with anything else. We should go back and correct some of our very primary conditions on James Farm Road. Thank you.
Any more speakers? Any more speakers? Any more speakers? Attorney Kelly Kubik Bellis, do you want to continue hearings for another day, or?
Yes, we were discussing that, and if you want, I can go off the record, or I can do it on the record, whatever you prefer.
We'll do it on the record for.
Can I say something first, Mr. Chairman? We've asked in other hearings, I know a lot of people have left already, but we have asked for people that didn't speak that were here either in support or against for a show of hands.
There's not a lot of people here right now, and it looks like we're going to go to a continued hearing, we could ask that question.
Can we ask that at the beginning of the next hearing, since a lot of people leave?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we were running into a time problem, and we wanted to ask, the attorneys wanted to ask the commission whether they're available on June 29th. And let me just explain what that would be for. Attorney Kelly and Joe have some expert witnesses that they would like to put on, and then I could do my rebuttal right after they're finished. That's the goal.
Sounds good. We also have the rigor zoning meeting on the 28th, which it is on the agenda for additional testimony. Maybe we'll leave that open to the general public who wants to comment during that time period, and then maybe on the 29th, we'll have Attorney Kelly, Attorney Kubik, and your presentations.
Excuse me. I'm seeking an endorsement for the Second District Council on the 29th, so I won't be available, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that's not a good day. We can do the 28th, but Joe has a problem with one of his witnesses, and that's your regular scheduled meeting.
I know this is going to get uncomfortable from a timing prospect, and I know we all have other things to do, but it's imperative that this hearing is concluded within 35 days of when it began. So we are really bumping up against deadlines now. The applicant can grant extensions, the problem is, so many extensions were granted prior to the commencement of the hearing, there's only, by my calculations, two days of extensions left that can possibly be granted. There's a lot of evidence that's got to be presented to this commission by Attorney Kelly and Attorney Kubik, and then Attorney Bellis will have the right of cross-examination and the right of rebuttal, so there's several hours of testimony that is going to have to be heard yet on this matter. Talking to everybody, there are really few nights that can be accommodated, and the 29th was one of them. I think people can probably come, you know, the 5th or the 6th, but now you're really bumping up against the deadline to complete this hearing, and I wouldn't advise that.
Attorney Florick, just for the record, what is the drop-dead date?
Well, what I'd like to do is to have all of us confer with Jay to make sure we're all on the same page. As I calculated, it's July 4th, but that's a holiday, so it's really July 5th by my calculations. And then, as Attorney Bellis said, he can extend. I believe that 63 days of extensions have already been granted. That would leave two, but we need to confer and make sure we're all on the same page on that.
We also have to make sure that we actually have a room also available for audio and visual, too.
That is true.
I know there's a lot of other town meetings also booked. Yes, that'd be perfect.
Was the 29th available with council chambers? Is council chambers available?
None of us looked at that, so.
I can tell you the 5th isn't available because there's a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting in this room.
Does anybody have?
What is the final day we could do it?
By my calculations, 35 days is July, will be July 5th, but then two days of extensions can be granted. And we've got to think about that a little bit, though, because the two days since the 5th is really an extra day because the 4th was a holiday. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that two days can be tacked onto that. Maybe one.
We have a little clarification from the schedule here.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the attorneys. Mr. Kelly, approximately how long do you think the testimony from your witnesses will take to present? Hour? Mr. Kubik? Right, I understand, I understand. So we're looking at a three hour, somewhere between two and three hours of testimony from.
And then, also, you have to grant the applicant right of rebuttal, too, after that.
They have cross-examination and then rebuttal, so, you know, you're probably somewhere four to five hours before you wrap up.
And that's not deliberations for rendering a decision?
You have 65 days once the hearing is completed.
Okay, so we have time after that.
That's not the problem, the problem is getting the hearing completed.
So we still have four to five hours, you're saying, of testimony?
That's not assuming any other members of the public who also want to speak on the.
So that actually sounds like it would be more two nights we have, not one.
We have the 28th as our regularly scheduled meeting, but we also have a full zoning agenda.
We have a full, full zoning agenda on that day.
Three have been withdrawn.
What was that?
Three have been, I'm sorry, deferred.
Deferred.
Three have been deferred.
I'll give Mr. Hibansky the floor to talk about the schedule.
Well, the 27th, 28th, and 29th are our, council chambers is reserved for someone else.
I'm sorry, what was that?
27th, 28th, and 29th, council chambers is reserved for, by someone else.
Tina was just saying the 29th was not good in council chambers. However, if what's going to happen on the 29th is Mr. Kelly and Mr. Kubik presenting their experts, do you really need council chambers, or could that be done in 2:13?
That was going to be my point. When the town council holds public hearings for the budget, we don't necessarily use this room, they use the high schools, which are obviously video and audio capable.
I was also about to reference, too, we've also had Attorney Kelly present at the town's case for 3044 Main Street at the Baldwin Center, too. So there's, as long as there's some sort of audio and/or visual record of deliberations.
That's important, you do need that audio record.
The force comes worst if someone has a video recorder, too, for additional documentation. I know that's why chambers is usually preferred, but I know the Board of Education has pretty high-tech capabilities as well. So, we do have a couple of options for, I guess, alternate locations.
Correct. Does it have to start at 7 o'clock? Can it start at 7:30?
Sure it could, no problem with that. This is, you know, this public hearing, this is being continued, so it's one meeting, it's just.
It's a continuous meeting.
Right, so it's 7:30 or even 8 o'clock, if that fits better with your schedule, you know.
And don't forget, as long as commissioners review evidence, which is the audio record, visual record, and documents submitted in their absence, and state that into record during administrative deliberations, that makes up for any lost time.
But the council chambers is not available on the 29th, so we'd have to do it at the Baldwin Center now. You'd have to check with, or you said you mentioned the Baldwin Center, or a high school?
Yes.
Now, I know that the Baldwin Center, I'm not sure what room they're doing it in, but the.
Usually the big one.
The DTC has their meeting that night at the Baldwin Center on the 29th. So, I don't know where they're going to have it, they've had it in both rooms, they've had it in the small kitchen room, and they've also had it in the large room, so that's something you have to look into.
The school auditorium's also a possibility.
Well, there's also Thursday, the 30th, and Friday, the 1st.
We'd have to check these guys' schedules, they were looking at the 29th for a reason, I suppose, that's the reason, and I think the reason was that all three of them could make it that night.
How many days notice, though, that we have to be able to post the agenda? So, I mean.
It would have to be pretty quick, we'd have to get it out pretty quickly.
Well, I mean, don't forget, this is a continued meeting, so I don't think that the statute for notice pertains. So what you're talking about is maybe, you know, freedom of information requirements, which are like, I don't know, 24 hours, 48 hours, something like that.
So is it possible to do it this week?
Well, that would depend on everybody's schedule.
Is it, I mean, is there something going on here Friday? Usually Fridays.
Town Hall is usually not open after 4:00, 4:30 on Fridays.
Thursday, tomorrow it's Reserve Planning Commission, Wednesday reserved for Parks and Rec, and Thursday is open, Friday is open.
Thursday of this week is open?
Yes.
Yeah, it's also if a commissioner is going to be absent, they could review the tape and documents in their absence for administrative session.
If you guys could find a space for the 29th, that's fine with me, I could review, or if you can do it an hour later, I'd be, I'd be very happy if you could do it an hour later than 7:00.
Either one of those possibilities would work.
Now we just have to find a place to have it. Now we just have to find a place to have it.
Now, yeah. I would recommend one of the high school or middle school auditoriums.
So I'll check, I'll check with the high school to see if they, Scott, you're pretty sure Baldwin Center is booked?
I don't know what room they're using, but I know the 29th is booked.
I'll check both tomorrow, see if they, they have space available for us with audio, with AV.
And let's schedule a meeting at 7:30. We could always take the meeting at a sort of these if we have to.
Okay, so, so the EPA is here. The EPA is here, EPA is here on the 29th at 5:30. They, there's nothing else booked after that?
No.
So they won't be done by 7? 7:30?
I have no idea.
We can't assume the length of another meeting.
I've asked something similar.
Yeah.
They said that it's booked for the night, 5:30. They could go for 10 minutes.
Yeah.
It's booked.
They could go for 10 minutes, they could go for three hours. You don't know.
You don't know. So I'll look for the 29th and we'll all get our heads together tomorrow morning.
And let's have a backup date planned, too, just in case the 29th doesn't work.
Look for the commissioners, the 29th, 7:30, somewhere works Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a general consensus. We just need to hammer out location details. With that said, I'll entertain a motion to continue this hearing.
Motion to continue to the 29th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All of us in favor of voting to continue?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're adjourned at 10:16.[1738.33]